Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call to order the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, August 26, 2015. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kane?
Here.
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Badami?
Here.
Chair Birch?
Here. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join Commissioner Erickson for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, the Republic of America, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you, Commissioner Erickson. Do we have any written communications this evening? No?
No.
And any requested continuances this evening?
No.
In addition to their great service on the Planning Commission, members of the Commission serve on other town committees. Do we have any reports to give this evening? Commissioner Kane?
Well, since we last met, the Historic Preservation Committee has met three times, and Commissioner O'Donnell and I serve on that committee. At the first meeting, July 22, we had a case on Mulberry Drive with modification. It was approved. On Foster Road, the applicant was asked to come back. They came back for the second meeting. The modifications were provided, and the request was approved. At all three of these meetings, the committee has been working on a rewrite of the historic demolition policies. And we have submitted a draft to staff for their review, potentially counselor review by the town attorney, and then we'll be coming back to the full commission for review. We met on two other occasions. Very busy committee. We had a case on Francis Oaks Way, approved, Main Street approved. They can be very educational. I invite anyone who wishes to attend these exciting meetings to come down. They do good work, because what they're doing is preserving the historic districts that we have and any home in town that was built prior to 1941. And without that, well, we might not look the way we look. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any other reports? So we've now come to the verbal communication portion of our meetings. Actually, no. Sorry. We've changed this agenda order up a bit recently, so I'm changing my notes a bit. So, excuse me. At these meetings, members of the public are always invited to address the Commission on any item first which is not on the agenda. If you do have any item that you would discuss, like to discuss, which is not on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you please fill out a speaker card, give those to staff, and we will have you come and address the Commission. Another way that you can address the Commission this evening is during one of the itemized items. Again, we ask that you please fill out a card, and when we speak to that agenda item, you will be called up to speak for three minutes. We also always encourage, prior to any of our meetings, please, if you have any emails, letters, or any other kinds of communications that you would like to have, to please send those in. We find those to be critical to our decision-making. The next item that I have is the approval of the minutes. We have minutes in our packet for August 12. Do we have any disclosures? Would anyone like to approve, make a motion? Commissioner Talisfor?
Right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting, August 12, 2015. And I've read them and found nothing that I disagree with.
Great. Will we have a second? Commissioner Badami?
I'll second the motion.
All right. All?
Aye.
Hi. Great. Thank you. So I show we have no items on the consent calendar this evening. Is that correct? No continuances. We've now come to the public portion of the hearing, and if anyone would like to speak on an item, as I mentioned earlier, which is not on tonight's agenda, you may do so. I have no cards, so I assume at this point that there is not anyone. So we are now going to move into the agendaized items on the meeting. I'm going to change the agenda up just a little bit this evening, and we are going to move item number four to item number one, and I'm going to move item number one to the end, just based on timing. I promise we'll be expeditious on this. So we're now going to consider item number one, which had been item number four, Architectural and Site Application S-15-001, requesting approval to construct a new single-family residence and removal of large protected tree at 15371 Santella Court, Lot 8. This is property zoned HR-2 1/2 PD, APN number 52709-017. Are there any disclosures by Commissioner for this item? And has everyone had an opportunity to visit the site? Yes. Ms. Puga, I understand that you will be giving us the staff report this evening?
That's correct. Good evening, Commissioners. The subject property is Lot 8 within the development known as the Highlands of Los Gatos, which is a 19-lot plan development that was approved by the Town Council in 2005. The application for Lot 8 includes a two-story residence, which is a single-story from Santella Court and two stories from the rear. The main or upper floor of the residence contains 4,054 square feet of living floor area and 795 square feet of garage. The lower floor of the residence contains 2,703 square feet of cellar and 524 square feet of qualifying living floor area. The plans were reviewed by the town's consulting architect and found to be well-designed and consistent with the style and scale of other homes approved in the subdivision. The consulting architect had two recommendations, of which one was not incorporated by the applicant. The consulting architect recommended to increase the width of the shutters on the front elevation or to use them consistently among the other elevations. Staff has recommended a condition to address the consulting architect's recommendation that's contained in Exhibit 3. The plans were also reviewed twice by the consulting arborist, initially prior to the design of the residence, and then again during the review of the development plans. The visibility analysis contained in Exhibit 10 of your packet this evening states that the proposed residence would be 2% visible from the viewing platform located on the southwest corner of Blossom Hill in Los Gatos Boulevard. An alternate visibility analysis was completed 150 feet south of the established viewing platform and found that the proposed residence would be 23% visible. An exception to allow fill greater than 3 feet and a driveway slope greater than 15% is supported by the need to provide a shared driveway between lots 8 and 9 that meets town and county fire department standards. Due to the steep topography of the site, the property is only accessible by the shared driveway. Shared driveways are encouraged by the hillside development standards and guidelines. The plans were deemed complete and scheduled for a public hearing on July 14 of this year through the Development Review Committee. The appellant, Mr. Weisman, was present for the meeting and voiced his concerns regarding the methodology utilized for the view analysis and the view analysis standards for 15434 Santella Court, or Lot 7 of development, and that those standards should be applied to the subject application. After discussing the neighbors' concerns, the Development Review Committee found that the application was in compliance with the hillside development standards and guidelines exclusive of the grading requirements and driveway slope, the hillside specific plan, and the PD ordinance. The following day, Mr. Weisman appealed the DRC's decision based on his concerns with the view analysis. While the town understands Mr. Weisman's concerns, the project is in compliance with the hillside development standards and guidelines exclusive of the sections, the hillside specific plan, and the PD ordinance. The same methodology that was used for Lot 7 of the subject development was also applied to this application. In addition, the visibility methodology does not include a peer review. As such, staff recommends that the appeal be denied and the application be approved subject to the attached conditions. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Badami?
What methodology did staff use for a visibility study?
So staff is using our current methodology in our hillside development standards and guidelines, and we're also drafting a methodology for the Commission and Town Council's consideration at a future date. The applicant's methodology would comply with the current language and our draft language being considered.
I'm still not clear. What is staff's methodology?
So staff's methodology is you go to the viewing platform. You take pictures from two different distances with a lens, a 50-millimeter and a 300-millimeter. The 50-millimeter to represent the naked eye, the 300-millimeter to represent a close-up visual. You identify any story poles, netting, that are visible, and you take the calculation. Any parts of the residence that are visible should be not included as part of that methodology, and as a result, you come up with a calculation.
So this is separate from what the applicant provides. Is that correct?
This is what the applicant has provided.
So staff doesn't do their own. This is what the applicant does?
Correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Staff does review what the applicant submits, so we don't just accept it without critique. So we look at it. Within your staff report for item 2, Exhibit 10, the draft visibility analysis methodology is contained in that packet. We didn't repeat it for all of the Highlands areas, but it is in your packet for review. In addition, if there is vegetation that is proposed to be removed, either partially or entirely, then that part of the vegetation is also not counted as screening for the proposed development.
Thank you, Ms. Peretti.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? No? Thank you. Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't notice that Commissioner Talisfor had her hand up.
It came up late.
Okay.
Just to go over this again, did you say that the percentage that is not visible is at 24 or 25, or 23?
So this particular lot from the viewing platform is 2% visible. If we do the alternate view analysis, which is 150 feet south, it would be 23% visible.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. So we'll now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the appellant. Correct? Okay. 10 minutes to address. The Commission, Mr. Weisman. When you come up, please make sure you adjust the microphone to speak clearly, state your name.
Raise that up a little bit. Dave Weisman, Francis Oaks Way. First off, the main issue tonight for all three Highland lots is that of visibility, which is not surprising, given that the main impetus to pass the hillside development standards was to prevent future large, visible homes on our hillsides. And during the course of the three hearings tonight, I will try not to repeat myself. But clearly, there is going to be overlap between the different issues for the different lots. Now to the issue at hand. I come before you tonight not as someone who will benefit from the building of a house. I can't see any of the various story poles from my house. But like many other Los Gatos citizens, I did work on the hillside standards and understand the goals and mission expressed at the workshop meetings. You now have the opportunity and responsibility to positively impact our hillsides for years to come. The Town Council in 2009 gave you guidelines on how to interpret several hillside visibility issues, and the present Town Council gave you the charge, as the deciding body, to address those and other visibility issues. This project doesn't have to go back to the Town Council. There are six areas that I believe you need to address for these three applications. How should visibility be calculated? Number two, when are alternative viewing platforms appropriate to use as provided for in the hillside standards? Number three, what constitutes a healthy tree? Four, what constitutes harm to a tree? Five, when should a deciduous tree be accessed for visibility? And six, should these all-important visibility calculations be peer-reviewed? I will now focus on the issue of visibility calculations. Should you have any questions about the other five issues, please feel free to ask that later. The applicant and their architectural firm have detailed how visibility calculations were performed. Because this is important, I quote from the applicant, the architect's letter of April 30, 2015, and I quote, "Photos are taken at 300-millimeters," that is, with a 300-millimeter lens while standing at the viewing platform, "to provide a close-up to identify the visible story poles and existing trees," end quote. Please note that they said existing trees and not individual trees. At the Town Council meeting on May 19, Mr. Abs expanded as follows. "The photographer then immediately goes on-site to determine which trees are which and assess canopy and height of trees in relationship to story poles." He continues, "The existing trees that are being preserved are outlined as closely as possible, as far as where that canopy extent is," end quote. To which I say, that is pretty impressive for a 6-foot-tall person standing in a dense grove of 25- to 30-foot-tall oak trees on Lot 8. I'm sure the Planning Commission would love to see the step-by-step process by which the applicant removes those certain trees from the visual analysis that are slated to be removed by construction. But let's give them the benefit of the doubt and walk through the process and see if it makes sense. So pictures are taken from the viewing platform, and then the photographer goes up to the lot and determines which trees are providing screening by standing underneath the trees and looking up. Sounds pretty straightforward, but there are devils in these details, even for the straightforward example for Lot 7 with only three screening trees. And this is Lot, this is Lot 7, and there are three screening trees, but from a distance, it's not very easy to figure out which trees are which. What I did was, I then flew a remote-controlled helicopter in front of the Lot 7 and positioning it at an angle which would be consistent with, as if you were, your line of view, if you were standing at the viewing platform. And now, we can tell which trees are which. So this is Tree 606, 607, and 626. I am not 30 feet tall, so we were able to correlate, you can watch with your helicopter on your screen and get the angle which is consistent with those photographs that we took at the viewing platform. We can now basically identify these three trees providing screening, which, incidentally, Mr. Abs had difficulty doing so at the Town Council meeting in May, immediately after disparaging my use of a drone. And while such a simplified process does work on Lot 6 with its three isolated trees, this process won't work on Lot 8, where the house would sit in a grove of trees because the canopies are too interlinked. The individual tree canopies would somehow need to be marked from the ground to show the boundaries of each tree. This could be accomplished by placing different colored ribbons in each tree and then using a drone to photograph them close up. Determining which trees are providing screening on lots 8 and 10 is difficult, which is probably why the applicant hasn't listed anywhere in all their documents which numbered trees are providing screening on lots 8 and 9, as they did for Lot 7. I want to briefly talk about the grove of trees on Lot 8 where the proposed house is to be located. Of course, the applicant didn't design the house to fit the constraints of the site as required by the hillside standards. The consulting arborist defines a grove as "a group of trees that are located close together that shelter each other from wind and the elements having knit canopies." If of the same species, there is usually root grafting between trees, which lends support from the ground, as well as water and mineral sharing. Removal of one or some grove members could cause remaining members to be unstable due to a reduction of previous shelter. Grove trees often have asymmetrical canopies when viewed as individuals. Well, that doesn't sound good. So 18 protected trees are recommended for removal, and 11 will be impacted by construction on Lot 8, according to the arborist's final report. Well, that still leaves a few protected trees in the area. But of course, please note that nowhere in the visibility calculations does Davidan tell us which oaks are providing screening. Now, I don't know if that is because they simply don't know, given the knitted canopies, or because they don't want us to know. So how are we to decide if their calculations have any chance of being accurate? What is the possible margin of error in their calculations? Please don't let the applicant hoodwink you. If there ever was a good argument to have this visibility calculation peer-reviewed by a company with no financial ties to Davidan, this applicant is the poster child. Interestingly, if you look at the tree map on page 1 of the final arborist's report, your Exhibit 6 for Lot 8, you will see the location of trees 637 and 646 facing the valley floor. Both of these trees are in poor condition and recommended for removal by Ms. Ellis, the consulting arborist, because they are essentially goners, even with low anticipated trauma from construction. But the applicant, in Exhibit 8, says that they tend to preserve these trees, which I normally would applaud them for if their motives weren't so transparent. Both of these trees face the valley floor and may provide screening. I don't know if that is true, because the applicant hasn't told us which trees do provide screening. But clearly, the visibility analysis provided by the architect just uses the outline of the whole grove to calculate their 23%. How are we to have transparency in this process with so little information? What does the expression go? Garbage in, garbage out. I don't expect you to tackle all of these six complex issues tonight, starting from scratch, but there is an easy and common-sense solution, and it is indirectly presented in the staff report on all three lots. According to staff, sometime in the next month, you will have a draft of new proposed methodologies for how to assess visibility. Doesn't it make sense to wait until we have these guidelines in place before considering all three applications? This way, along with community input, you and the Town Council could decide how to incorporate those values from the hillside standards into these visibility discussions. We don't need developers showing us how to do this, especially when their methodologies make no sense. Besides, you know that should any of these three applications be approved tonight, I will probably file an appeal that now takes the process into September, October. We could conceivably have a Town Council hearing on these three lots the same night that they are also considering the draft visibility calculations. Common sense says that we avoid that situation. We don't need a rush to judgment here.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Erickson?
Thank you very much for your comments. I would be interested in hearing your comments about the timing of deciduous trees, which is one of the other ones. And then, when you talk about that, could you also address how we would, how we should think about, in a severe drought that we have now, where certain oak species do excessive defoliation in order to, as a survival technique, and so how that should affect how we think about this?
Thank you. I'd like to look at one of the trees, a deciduous oak on Lot 7, 626. It's an interesting question that you ask, and I think it has a two-sided answer. If you are interested in actually seeing what the visibility is going to be provided by that deciduous tree, then assessing it in the wintertime, when it has lost its leaves, will give you a very different measure than assessing it in the summertime, when it's in full leaf-out. The consulting arborist specifically says that to assess a deciduous oak for its health, one needs to look at it during the summertime, when it is leafed out, because in the wintertime, you can't tell dead branches from non-dead branches. And one could make the argument that in a development like this, where you have lots of different, 19 different houses, they could be assessed at both times. A lot of these trees are in fair to poor condition, and in fact, Tree 626, over the 23-month period of January 2013 to December 2014, declined in vigor. It went from fair-poor, it went from fair-to-fair-poor, very possibly because of the drought. But as the consulting arborist points out, there have been multiple transgressions on these sites by equipment, by compaction of the roots, by grading, and it's hard to know how much that contributes to the decline of these trees, too. That answer your question? Not quite.
I'm interested in how you would help us, how you would, how you would help us think about the defoliation that occurs, because if you're in a severe drought, so if I have, if I have excessive defoliation going on for a surviving tree as part of its own survival technique, so it will obviously, well, it will presumably provide less screening than it would in a year in which there wasn't severe drought. So how do we, how do we deal with those different? So we could hypothetically make a different decision, simply based upon how, how much the tree is defoliating and how severe the drought is.
I'm probably...
So how do we, how do we think about?
I understand your question.
How do we think about that?
I'm not an arborist. The consulting arborist has addressed that by saying, it's possible this, it's possible that. I don't think anybody knows. Some people are talking about a big El Nino year coming in. Other people are talking about the blob that's going to attenuate the El Nino year. We don't know. But clearly, trees that are in not very good shape, as these trees are, they can die during a prolonged drought. That doesn't answer your question? I don't think it can be answered. I will say that on most of the other lots that we're going to be considering tonight, a lot of the screening is not provided by deciduous trees. Lot 7, the three main trees are deciduous. Lot 10, the one main tree, 706, is also deciduous. That tree is in poor condition, and it's unclear, given the impact of construction, which the consulting arborist has talked about. So the combining of the drought, impact from construction, is almost anybody's guess as to whether some of these trees will make it.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Kane?
Dr. Weisman, I applaud your efforts and respect your knowledge and your contribution to these kinds of subjects. Were you one of the authors or community input people to the development of the current hillside standards and guidelines?
Yes, I was.
So as a planning commissioner, what's before us is to grant your appeal of a decision by the DRC regarding the A&amp;S on this lot and probably the two others. Is that correct? Given your knowledge of the subject, can you guide me to specific provisions in the hillside standards and guidelines that I would consider to use, to reference, in order to uphold your appeal? You know, as I've said many times before, it's a judicial process. So I'm thinking, I have to find something in here to grant your appeal. What would you suggest I look at, in your opinion?
I could sit down with you, and we could go through that. There are many, many areas, and I think some of the other speakers... There are many, many areas, and I think some of the other speakers tonight may be addressing them. Where we talk about, the main overriding concern is visibility from the valley floor. We talk about sustainability. We talk about maintaining the integrity of the hillsides, both visually and biologically. Those references are throughout the beginning parts of that document, where it talks about intent and goals.
May I?
And I could--
If your appeal is upheld, what's your outcome? Where do you want to go? No house, smaller house, different color house?
The document is a balance between property rights and the goals and intents of the citizens of Los Gatos. This is a property, which is legally zoned. The developer has a right to build a house here. In 2009, when the McCarthy issue came before the town council, Mike Wasserman said, so 25 percent visibility is bad, but 24 percent visibility is okay. He was being sarcastic, in the sense that the hillside documents talk about minimizing visibility. The best house is a house that is not visible at all. And all of the prior houses in the Highlands Project have not been visible from viewing platforms. That's why you haven't seen me. We're now dealing with the houses that are up on that ridge, that are in that knob, and all have visibility issues. In fact, you could make the interesting analogy, the bigger the house you build, the better off you are in the hillsides, because the house would now slop over, if you will, into many areas, and some of those areas of that house would be screened by trees that are there. If I wanted to come up and build an ecologically sustainable house of 500,000 square feet, and I was going to put it right in the center of a clearing--
I'm going to interrupt, Doctor, because, you know--
All right.
We had our ten minutes. What I think I just heard you say, and it may be an unfair paraphrasing, I want the house less visible.
Yes.
Is that--
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
And one last question. If we did rule that we ought to wait for the new guidelines, is that fair? I'm not saying the case is right or wrong. I'm just saying that somebody proceeded to do something under a set of rules, as they interpreted them perhaps, or as they were really written, or whatever, but there's this new set of rules coming down, and those rules weren't in effect when we were playing the game a certain way. Is it fair to hold someone accountable early in the fourth quarter with a new set of rules? I hear what you're saying, and I'm almost slightly surprised. It doesn't swallow well.
I think it is fair, for the following reasoning. Some of these issues were tackled back in 2009 by the town council. And if you listen to the tape and read the transcript, it is very clear that those council members meant that issues concerning health of trees, trees that are unharmed, using alternative viewing platforms, were all meant to be town policy going forward, not just for the McCarthy application. Staff has interpreted this differently. At the town council meeting in May, where my appeal was granted, Councilwoman Spector and Jensen very precisely asked staff if their concerns about visibility calculations were going to be relayed to the planning commission when this item, if this item came back here for remand. There's no doubt about that. They were unhappy with the procedure that was being used to calculate visibility. And staff assured them that that would be done.
As a layman talking to a professional in this area, can I get my hands around the issue as visibility?
The--
It's binary.
The points that I talked about.
The six of them.
The six of them.
One of which is visibility.
One is visibility, viewing platforms, a healthy tree.
Thank you. I got it. And thank you, Chair President.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I was just curious. You were talking about the bigger the house, in a certain respect, almost the better it was. And you said 500,000 square feet, and I think you meant five, didn't you?
I said, did I-- Okay, I meant 500--
Maybe I misheard, but I was pretty sure you meant five.
I meant 500 square feet.
But would you just explain to me, because I'm trying to learn, too? Let's assume you built a 5,000-square-foot house. Would you finish your point about, in a sense, the bigger the house, perhaps the easier?
If I built a 500-square-foot house--
Okay.
--in the center of one of these lots in the hillsides, with not affecting any trees, any grading, that house might be 100 percent visible from a viewing platform. It would be rejected, even though it's so much more ecological and sustainable than a 5,000-square-foot house.
Is it fair to say that your view of this case, and the reason for your appeal, at least in part, if you don't agree with the way the viewing platform and the percentages obtained were, in fact, used in this particular matter?
I'm not sure how the percentages were calculated. They just, they make no sense to me.
Okay.
I'm going to stand underneath those trees and look up and tell you which tree is which. What you could do is you could take those trees on Lot Eight and outline each tree. You could put some tape in them. One tree is pink, one tree is blue, one pink is orange. And then you could perhaps separate the canopies, then come back and tell us which ones of these trees are going to come out because of the development. Then, the architect could do his mock-up before and after the trees that are going to be removed, and then we'd get an idea of which trees were providing screening. The applicant hasn't even talked about which trees provide screening on Lot Eight, because I suspect they can't do it.
Now, when you used what I will call a drone or the helicopter, what was the purpose of that?
Very simply, from standing on the viewing platform, 1.3 miles away, with a 400-millimeter lens, the applicant used a 300, and then putting that image into Photoshop and expanding it even more, I still could not tell for sure which trees were which. But when I flew the drone in front of it, then we can see it. We can go in and out, and we can appreciate that. To try that, those are three isolated trees. They stand alone, essentially. To try, even try this on Lot Eight, would be very difficult to separate the trees.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Talisfor?
Very quickly. I wanted to ask you, one of those trees, are those trees coast redwoods, I mean redwoods, coast oaks, or are they valley oaks, or are they blue oaks?
Blue oaks. They're all three blue oaks.
All three are blue oaks.
On Lot Seven.
Okay. And those are noted for being not really dense with leaf and foliage, as I--
Well, I think, given the drought, and the fact that, as the consulting arborist points out, a lot of these trees have been inappropriately pruned, they have been injured by, they have suffered mechanical injuries to them.
Well, my next question for you, if you don't mind, is what is your opinion about the pruning of one of those trees for the structure itself?
Okay, I assume you're talking about Tree 606. Right. Ms. Ellis has commented that the amount of pruning would be close to 25 percent--
Right.
--which is at the limit of the new tree protection ordinance. This is a tree that is going to be moderately impacted by construction.
Actually, I'm going to ask, I'm going to step in, because this is a different lot. This is Lot Seven that he's looking at right now. That's not the lot that we're discussing, just to make sure that it's clear. The photo that he's looking at right now is Lot Seven.
Lot Seven.
So just for the sake of conversation, and to make sure we're looking at the proper lot. All right. Do we have any other questions? No? Thank you. We are now going to call the applicant up to speak, and you will also get 10 minutes to address the commission. Mr. Abs, please make sure you state your name and have the microphone directly in front of your mouth, so we can hear you properly.
Good evening. I'm Steve Abs with Davidon Homes. Before I respond to the appellant's comments, I'd like to do a quick overview of the project. It's Highlands of Los Gatos, Lot Eight. It's a craftsman-style home designed by Vicenian Lagone architects. It's on one of the most difficult lots that we have in--
You know, that mic actually comes out. You can take it with you, if you're going to stand away, so we can hear you better. Thanks.
So it's, this is one of the most difficult lots that we have in all of Highlands of Los Gatos, both because of the steepness of the lot, the slope comes directly off the back of the curb at basically a 25 or so percent slope. And then the geometry of the property lines, it's basically a pie-shaped, triangular-type lot. I've got a flyover video here that we're going to turn on real quick. So basically, the lot is sloped, the 30-foot setback on this house forces the house to be down below the street 10 feet. The only possible way you can get into this house is by shared access on the Lot Nine access. You can see there, right on the side, there's the garages. The house has got a lot of articulation on the back. You can see the back is a, it runs parallel with the contours of the slope, and it's basically a triangular-shaped house to fit in this very difficult lot. Okay, and back to the PowerPoint. So again, with the difficulties of this lot, the steepness of the slope is really challenging. It makes the access of the property very challenging, and also, the height requirement is a challenge in order to comply with the hillside development standards and guidelines. As you can see, this is the front and rear elevations. Again, a lot of nice architecture articulated all on both sides there. Which way am I supposed to be doing this, guys? Okay. There's the side elevations, real quick. You can see, this is the side on the bottom, that's the garage access side, that's the shared driveway that comes down for Lot Nine. On the civil plan, what we have done, and this is in response to one of Mr. Weisman's comments regarding impacts to trees, the Arborist's report that came out was prior to us making all the changes on the site to get clearances from the trees that we are preserving. So we have pushed away retaining walls, limits of grading, utilities, everything, according to Ms. Debbie Ellis's report. So we comply fully with Debbie Ellis's report in preserving the existing trees. You can see here the steepness of the lot. This is the back of the curb. The front setback is way down here. So it forces that house to be set down here at the minimum. Anything higher, you're going to be challenged with height issues on this lot. So again, that's why we were able to use the shared access on Lot Nine, which drove, was able to drive that house down further into the site, and so that we were able to meet all requirements of the hillside development standard and guidelines, except for the couple of unavoidable exceptions of the steepness of the driveway and the little bit of fill in the areas of the garage and the driveway. Now, to the visual analysis. The visual analysis was done at the viewing platform. As you can see here, there is a Chevron station and some pine trees that are in the view of Lot Eight there. You can see Lot Eight's sitting right there. Based on the new proposed methodology that staff's proposing, we have moved down 150 feet down the road, so you can get visibility of the site. But real quick, from the viewing platform, you see a little hole in this tree. Again, with the new methodology that staff's proposing here, we went ahead and moved down beyond the Chevron station to see the house. So here's the view 150 feet south. You see Lot Eight's right there. 50-millimeter lens is what a naked eye sees. So in reality, this is what you're seeing. I mean, it's hard to see here, but that's about the size of what it's in real life, and that's what it is. We use a 300-millimeter lens, so we can identify the existing trees. Obviously, this is with the lighting and everything, and I've got some additional photos that I can really show you as far as how we identified this. But the green line is the existing tree line that is defined as what trees are being screened on this site. And again, I don't have it on this one, but I will go into further identification of what trees are which. So the visual analysis ends up being at 23 percent on this lot. Once we plot the house in, based on the story poles being certified and by the surveyors and the architect's able to set this three-dimensional rendering in place. So real quick, in response to Mr. Weisman's comments here, first of all, the pictures that he had, and I'm a little confused here, because I thought we were talking about Lot Eight. It seems like we were talking about all three. So a lot of the pictures that he was showing was pictures zoomed in from a drone on Lot Seven. So first of all, you know, the reality of the fact is that the visual analysis here is to be viewed from the viewing platform. It's the naked eye standing, a person standing on the viewing platform, looking with a naked eye up at the hillside. It's not flying a drone 50 feet away. Staff has come up with, you know, and actually, the current methodology and this new proposed methodology, it's always been the fact that you use a zoom lens to zoom in and identify what trees are which, which story poles are which, to do a visual analysis. So again, the viewing platform should be from the naked eye, not from drones. As far as the methodology, I have provided a letter as far as what the architects use as far as methodology. They actually do go on-site, and they do look at the trees and get a feel for how the trees are sitting on the site relative to the story poles and the existing trees. And on an upslope, you can actually stand up at the street, and you can see exactly, you can see the tops of the trees, or, you know, look up, you know, a little bit to see where the trees are actually falling relative to the story poles. So it's not that difficult. I mean, you're not standing up and looking 45 feet up this way. You are standing up on the hill, looking and getting a view, and taking notes of where they are relative to the story poles. Now, on this particular site, and if you guys can pull up a file for me, please? If you can pull up Google Earth, Lot Eight, on this particular site, because it wasn't as clear-cut as Lot Seven and Lot Ten, as Mr. Weisman said, it was a kind of a bunch of trees, a grove, we did use, and maybe we can get the lights turned off, too. We did use, Google Earth, the architect used Google Earth, and, you know, Mr. Weisman uses, you know, says the use of drones. If you guys all know Google Earth, it's a pretty impressive technology, and literally, you can fly around the site. Can you get the lights, please? Is that okay? Sorry. You can literally fly around the site, and you can identify trees. So here, you can see, this is Lot Eight here. Numbers are on this as far as which trees are which. You can see how they are sitting relative to each other. You can fly left, right, down, up, sideways, every which way, to kind of get an idea of how they're sitting. So this is probably more effective, obviously more cost-effective, especially to an applicant that can afford it. This is a much more feasible application. So look, again, you can zoom in around, you can identify how trees are sitting relative to each other. And so that's that on that. Regarding the deciduous trees, there are no deciduous trees on this lot providing any screening. So back to the visual analysis, all the trees that we are proposing to remove have been removed from the visual analysis. And so the, again, no deciduous trees on the site, so that issue is a non-issue on this site. this site. In talking regarding the deciduous trees on other applications, Ms. Debbie Ellis did provide the visual, or the letter, saying that in the summer months, these blue oaks do, will basically lose their leaves entirely or partially. So you are seeing drought-affected blue oaks all through that entire hillside.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Talisfor.
So I just wanted to clarify in your visual presentation of the photographs that you took, your visibility study, 15 millimeters, is that it?
Correct.
And on Lot 8, just to identify it, am I seeing it correctly? I can see it on this, the sheets are not marked, so I can't help you out with that, but-
Yeah, so the, so it is on the top?
It's on the top. So I am seeing story, I am seeing something here, right?
Yeah, you probably, I can't see what you're looking at, but it's probably, yeah, that is the 50-millimeter visual analysis.
Okay. So I'm seeing story poles, I think.
I believe so.
I'm seeing a blob of something. Correct?
Yeah, if you can pull up, there's a file, visual analysis-
I just wanted to be sure, because it was rather, it was folded, and it was hard to-
Analysis, updated 150 south.
You can count the pages if you want.
So are you looking at the Chevron station?
Yeah, it's right here. I just wanted to make sure that was it.
No, I just wanted to make sure you saw the same page.
So, one more. That was, for some reason, not the right one. If you go back maybe to the PowerPoint.
It's the, I think it's the alternate, I'm not sure.
There, those are the photos, yes.
Yes, it's that one. This is, that's the photo.
So you, there's, I guess the thing on this one, you probably are looking at Lot 7 story poles. Those are up also on this photo. It's hard to identify, again, with the lighting here, but Lot 7's right adjacent to it, Lot 8, you know, you may see story poles or not, but regardless, the visual analysis here-
Okay. All right, well, that being said, I wanted to talk about another subject, instead of the visibility during the daytime, I really wanted to know about the visibility at the nighttime. So, you know, there's more than just daytime visibility. I mean, one of the things that we will end up seeing from the valley floor would be lighting, and maybe possibly reflective windows. So I'm wondering what your plans are for windows and lighting during the, you know, daytime and nighttime, et cetera, et cetera? Because there's a lot of windows on that house.
Yeah, I don't think there's any policy or anything in place for the town that has any requirements.
No, I don't know that, but-
I would defer to staff on that, but, you know, as of right now, I don't think there's any requirements as far as lighting at night.
So you don't have any, you don't have anything in plan for that?
Dennis, I don't know if, if I may-
On some of the photographs you provided, there were some, you know, glares from cars, and it just reminded me that that happens with windows, too.
If I may, I will fill out a speaker card as well. I'm Dennis Rosari with David on Holmes, and the visibility analysis at night is not done. It's not part of what's required by the hillside standards and design guidelines. However, we don't have any control of what a homeowner may do in the way of curtains or blinds within their house. A lot of the, especially on Lot 8, with a lot of the visibility of that house being below the canopy, those windows are gonna be equally screened below the canopy as they would be with curtains or blinds, most likely. Some light emissions may be visible from the valley floor, but I do not think it's gonna be excessive by any means, given the location of the house and how little visibility of the house is there.
All right, well, thank you. And then I have one other question of Mr. Abs. Did you ever stand on Lot 8 and actually take a picture at the story pole level or whatever, looking out?
I'm sure I did. We've provided story pole pictures to staff for, as part of the application. Did I do any visual analysis from that point? No. But in looking at the tree screening for the site, yeah, you do stand up there, you look at, you try to determine where that drip, or that tree line is. And Mr. Weisman brought up the fact of tree number 646, which happens to be downhill. And in fact, here's a good exhibit. So this is, this is an exhibit identifying, again, how we identified the tree line in addition to using the use of Google Earth and the on-site. You can see here, these are the trees identified here. Trees number 648, 647, 651, 650, those are being removed. Those are not within, the green line is what's being used as screening. 646, 645, 644, 643, 642, and 641, those are all being used for screening. So again, using the Google Earth, using the on-site analysis relative to what story poles are what, this is what the visual analysis is based on.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Commissioner Kane?
Is it possible to put up on the screen the diagram Charlie 2 for Lot 8, grading and drainage? Is that handy? Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah. That's one of three pictures in, on that section. I was looking, in your presentation, you mentioned retaining wall, and I remembered seeing the retaining wall. So you've got, I'm guessing, a 30-degree slope there?
It's less than 30%. The LRDA is a line drawn for where that 30% line, I guess, is-
Well, that line looks like 30%.
Well, I think it's more like a 24, 25.
But I'll take your point, that it's steep, because it sure is steep. And, do we have a right gun? The corner to the right, I'm guessing, is that fill?
This here?
Yeah.
Yes, this is fill.
Okay. And so that's fill there, and that's a retaining wall on the other side, and the 30% slope and a rectangle has been backed into the hill.
Correct.
And we were talking about the hillside standard and guidelines, and I asked the doctor for maybe a specific reference on something that might be awry. And when you said retaining wall, I went to page 18 of the hillside standards and guidelines. And can we get this up on the wall? As opposed, as opposed to the rectangle where earth has been taken out and then it's been put in, a picture, two pictures are worth a thousand words. The one on the left is going to say, "Do this, step down the hill." The one on the right is gonna say, "Don't do this," where there's retaining walls, there's filled-in dirt to build a flat floor of a rectangle. Maybe that slope is a bit too much, I don't know. So I have, I have to disinform the question. What is your reaction to that? How do I, how do I get around that? It looks like a classic "don't do this."
Yeah, I think there's guidelines in the, or there's guidelines and standards within the hillside development standard and guidelines that allow a certain amount of fills. They do allow five-foot retaining walls. And in this case, in order to access this, I'm shining this laser, everyone. In order to access the site, the only feasible way to get to the site is the way we have designed this thing. There's absolutely no other way to design this site. So in order to get access-
Maybe it's not a good site.
Well, it's an approved project. It's an approved lot that we have the ability to build something on. And no matter what size house you have on this lot, this would be the only access into this lot. And in regards to this "don't do," I think if you pull up our cross-section, and if you look at our cross-section here, we are doing this.
Step down?
We are doing, we are doing exactly what the "do" does, is actually saying. We have a retaining wall, then we have a single-story lot, or a single-story aspect of the house, and then we have, we're actually stepping up the hillside here.
I don't see the step.
This is the, this is, this is just one cross-section, if we can pull up across, pull up the elevation.
There's a diagram above it, and there's a diagram below it where there seems to be a heck of a lot of fill put into-
Architectural design.
Section A.
Or actually, yeah. So this is the architectural design. The area that you're referring to is this area in here. So you can see the house starts at a lower level here, steps up, and then steps up into the grade here, so there's another step in there. And if you look at the cross-section here, we're kind of doing the same similar thing. It's a step-up slope-type scenario. The cellar is excavated out. You know, that is a common thing in Los Gatos, that the excavator, that this cellar is allowed to be excavated out. But on the exterior of this, of this house, in these areas, we do step up the slope.
Going back to Charlie 2, if you could bring up the garage, the drawing below, the one you had up, it's called section A.
Right here, real quick, Mr. Kane.
I don't-
You can see, you can see the stepping up here also on this side of the house.
The garage just seems to be a more acute version of the drawing above it, where there seems to be a great deal of fill put in to have the flat floor.
There is a lot of fill, and that's the exception we are requesting from the hillside development standard guidelines.
There's a drawing on the bottoms, what I referred to, the dotted line-
This one here?
Yeah, it's like the whole garage is built out over space where there didn't use to be any dirt, now there's a ton of dirt-
Correct.
-to create a big old flat floor.
Correct. So the access to the garage is this driveway access here?
It just made me think of the picture that says, "Don't do this."
Well, unfortunately, the only way to get into a garage is via a driveway. And this is the only feasible location for the driveway into the site. So historically, past practice of staff is that access to the site is an exception that is allowed, and that's where we're at right now. That's why this exception was passed through DRC. You can confirm that with staff. But access to the house is something that's necessary, and it's, in this case, it's unavoidable for this fill to go in to get access to the house.
Given the constraints of the site?
Correct, correct. That's the whole thing. This is a very difficult, there's no doubt about, this is, like I said, this is the most difficult site in the entire Highlands here. We don't have any other site that we have to do this type of driveway access. It's an approved lot, we have the ability to build on it, and regardless of the size of the house on this thing, you're gonna, you're gonna be coming in the same access point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor.
I want to jump in on that because, pardon, oh, I want to jump in on that because, actually, I was looking at that as well, and I want to clear it up, so the garages, that's a detached structure?
They're split garages, so you got one garage on-
But it's detached from the house.
No, it's attached. It is attached to the house. Both sides are attached to the house. Do you mind? If you can pull up the architectural, architectural design, please. So both sides of the garage are attached to the house. You can see here, driveway comes down, shared driveway here, turns left, there's a garage, single entry garage here, double car garage here. This is the garage that's sitting on the fill.
All right. So, all right, but getting back to the "do's" and the "don'ts," and I'm referring to A17 of Exhibit 13. And then in the hillside design guidelines, I'm also referring to F, which is to step the building foundation and roofs with a natural slope. So I'm trying to understand how you've done that with this foundation.
The requirement from the hillside development standard and guidelines is that you cannot have any point on the house at a 25-foot height limit. So the 25-foot height limit is what is driving this house design. So in this case, we do have some decks that do step and follow, you know, basically follow, I guess, a hillside. There is some stepping back from the base of the deck to the top of the deck. But the driving factor here is that we are allowed a 25-foot height at any portion of that house. And then there's an overall 35-foot height requirement. So what you're seeing there on that- What you're seeing here is a maximum 25-foot height limit there, and the overall height's 35 feet. So we are allowed, within the hillside development guidelines, to do that.
You are, and so tell me how the foundation, then, is going with the slope of the lot? Or the second floor? Is that the second floor, or is that the cellar? What is that?
This is the lower floor. This is the upper floor.
Right, now, the lower floor, if I'm looking at that, has a lot of doors and windows. But anyway, how is that stepping down with the slope?
So this is the cellar here. This is all one level. This line is existing grade. It doesn't make much sense to have a little five-foot step in the foundation. We still are in compliance with the hillside development guidelines regarding heights, fills, everything in this particular area.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah. Well, for now. Yeah. We now invite comments from members of the public. If you have not already turned in a speaker card, I'm gonna ask that you please do so. The next card that I have is for Ms. Decker. You will have three minutes to make your comments.
Can you hear me? Good evening, planning commission. It's good to see you all here. The rampant growth of mammoth homes that were eco-destructive and highly visible on the hillsides spurred the desperate need for this town to do something quickly to protect our hillsides in the 1990s. The first monsters popped up along the county boundary, highly visible on our town's hillside backdrop. These highly reflective monoliths still blot our view shed. In order to keep that from creeping into our boundaries, we devised these guidelines as carefully as we could at the time. The 2004 Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines have served us well in most respects, but there are revisions that are needed and evident due to the many ways they can be interpreted. I've reviewed these 19 hillside lots as interpretive examples, and I agree with Dr. Weisman's assessment for the need to revise and strengthen the standards. May I remind you of the vision for our hillside standards and guidelines? It's a vision of Los Gatos that this natural asset be preserved by ensuring that any development in hillside areas maintains the existing open, wooded, and rural character, is in harmony with the natural setting, conserves landforms and other features of the natural landscape, preserves wildlife habitat and movement corridors, and protects and preserves view sheds and the ridge lines of the mountains. That is your quest.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Thank you. All right, the next speaker I have is John Bourgeois.
Good evening, Commissioner. John Bourgeois, 420 Alberta Way. I had the privilege of sitting up there with you guys- I had the privilege of sitting up there with you guys when we heard this original subdivision application. I'd just like to reiterate a couple of comments I made that evening, because, uh, one is that this is a very special piece of property. If you had the privilege of going up there before any development happened, you understand how beautiful that piece of property is. And I think we, as a town, have a responsibility. I think the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines are, are made for exactly this sort of, of parcel. And secondly, uh, the other comment I made that very night that the subdivision was approved, is that not all lots are created equal up there. Some of them are highly visible, some of them are highly wooded, some of them are very steep, right? There's lots of challenges, and so, I don't think just because a lot next to you has a house of a certain size, that guarantees the lot next to you. There's a lot of constraints. The, the developer even admitted that. There's some very real challenges to these lots, and you've got three of the most prominent lots in that subdivision before you tonight, and they're at 23%, 23%, and 24% visibility. I have a little bit of an issue with this magic number of 25. If you have 24% visibility of a 5,000-square-foot house, is that better than 26% visibility of a 2,500-square-foot house? It just seems very arbitrary, and I would point you to page 15 of the Hillside Standards and Guidelines. I believe it's, it's a standard, it's not a guideline, it's a standard, and it's one, two, or three, it's one of the first ones. It says, "Reduce the visual impact," period. And I think you, as the deciding body, if, if you're uncomfortable with the methodology that's been used to, to get at this visibility issue, I think it's within your right to, uh, I, I think you have the authority to, uh, to, to ask for more information, maybe postpone to make sure we get our methods right. I think that is, I think it is very fair. I think it's fair to the, all the town residents who have looked to the hillsides for so long as, as a symbol of, of the town of Los Gatos. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you very much. Um, and I was present with you. Would your suggestion then be, and I know it's not your duty to come up with a suggestion, but if I understand part of what you're saying, uh, would be perhaps the house would be better or more easily taken care of if it were smaller? Is that what you're suggesting?
That is, I mean, when the developer's talking about the difficulty of getting the house on the lot, there's a, there's an easy solution to that. I mean, make the house smaller. If, if it's that difficult to get that-sized house on the lot, then maybe the lot's not appropriate for that-sized house. So, yeah, that, that is one consideration I think should be on the table.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Talisfor.
Uh, may I ask a question, too? And this is just an opinion, but since you sat up here with us, and you're very familiar with the site and the guidelines, if we were to pass along a recommendation to council or to anyone else, or just in our own deliberations tonight, would there be any points that you would want us to include or to consider in evaluating these three lots? Because I think they are somewhat the same with what they present to us.
I would agree. I think you're faced with very similar visibility issues. I think there is a lot of confusion. When you go to a viewing platform, right, if you move 150 feet to the left or the right, you get a very different, I mean, it's not a single point in time, and you can, you can cherry-pick your perspective to get, you know, a certain percentage. And so, that, that just, that causes confusion, and that's why we're here tonight. So, I think gaining some clarity on exactly what we mean by this visibility standard is, is critical. I mean, the visibility platforms, it's an intersection in town. You can stand in a lot of different points in that intersection and, and get a different perspective. I mean, I think I saw one of the original, uh, visibility analysis, had part of the Chevron sign blocking part of, I mean, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways to skin this cat, and I think, uh, I think some clarity on that is much needed.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just following that up with you, um, and, and thinking about it, I, I would grant you that any number is, can be arbitrary, but the absence of a number is, becomes then very, very subjective. So, if not 25, what is it? And I don't, I'm not looking for a number, I'm looking, what ensures some consistency in decision if you have no number?
Giving that a little bit of thought, because I agree with you, you can't just go on the gut feeling, but you, you could do an area, you could do a surface area, right? Because you're looking at a two-dimensional plane, right? And so, instead of 25%, 25% of what? You've got a huge house, that's a bigger number than a small house. So, if you have a surface area, you could, you could calculate the average size of a home in the neighborhood, or project, you know, what's approved in the PD, and then you could come up with a surface area of visibility. And so, maybe that's, uh, a certain number based, you know, 25% of the average home size can't be visible in that neighborhood. I, I, I'm just, again, it's a difficult thing, I'm just trying to come up with a, a less arbitrary way to, to do it, but it's a two-dimensional plane, you could come up with a surface area number.
On the other hand, we are given that number. So, what you're asking us to do, I guess, is ignore the number?
Well, you have standards in there as well that just say, "Reduce the visual impact." And I think if all of these are cutting it so close, and they're very big homes, I think tonight's a pretty important night for the hillsides, and if they're all cutting it very close, and you're not comfortable with the methodology, I think that's your, that's your, your reason to make a finding that you can't find it consistent with the Hillside Standards and Guidelines.
In other words, and, and I don't mean this in an argumentative sense, because I'm groping as, in a sense you are. You, you, in that sense, you say, "Well, yeah, okay, it's 24% or 23%," but gee whiz, it doesn't really go with what this is all about.
Correct.
Uh, even though it's, pick, pick a number, 20%. Uh, it just stands out up there, and it ought not to go, because that's not the purpose of the guidelines and, and the, and the rules.
If you look at the intent, and you read the vision statement that Sandy just read, you know, you could interpret it that way.
Do we have any other questions? No? Thank you. And I have one more speaker card for Lee Quintana. Lee, you can just take that microphone out if it's easier for you.
Lee Quintana, um, I wrote something out ahead of time, but since the change in the orders, uh, may get a little bit confusing. But I want to start by saying, uh, that during the development of the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines, I was on the Planning Commission at the time, I was also on the Architecture and Hillside Standards Committee at the time that worked in the development of, of this document, and I was the chairman of that depart, of that, uh, committee. And at the time that, uh, it was adopted, I had several concerns, and one was what was with the visual analysis, how it happened, when it happened, and the 25% methodology. Um, I also had concerns with how the allowable maximum development and intensity was calculated. I believe it's flawed for a hillside. I had concerns that there were, uh, many, many exceptions that could be allowed. I had concerns that the focus, and I think this has been brought up here, especially by the last speaker, that when you focus on just one issue, you are not considering the overall intent, objectives, or goals of the document as a whole, or how it relates to the general plans, policies, and goals. That's case-by-case evaluation, and doing that sometimes doesn't take into the bigger picture of what the overall impacts of, uh, a project like a PD with 19 homes, or just in general, and you get accumulative impact. Um, I'm just gonna make a comment, because I'm gonna run out of time, of course. I agree with what Dave said, I agree with what Sandy said, I agreed with what, uh, John said, and as to the issue of the 25-foot maximum that you are allowed, that should be interpreted, oops, I always do this, that should be interpreted with the intent of the guidelines, which was to step the foundations down the slope, not just the, the house, the roofs, the foundations, not to create a flat pad all the way in to, and, and more or less create that kind of a situation. So, I think when you're looking at the constraints of the site, you have to look at all of them together and determine whether the design that has been presented addresses all of those constraints, or whether they're just addressing specific standards and, and not really considering the overall impact of that house. Thank you.
I had lots more to say, but I might say it later. Do we have any questions? No? Thank you. All right, I do not have any other speaker cards. Okay. So, that means we are going to give the applicant an additional five minutes to respond back to the items that you have heard tonight, and then, following that, I believe the appellant gets an additional five minutes.
Can I ask a question? Is it appropriate to have an agenda that is open for the meeting? Take item one, move it to item two.
Unfortunately, we, we can't address when people call out from the audience.
Okay. It is legal. Uh, I know, I'm sorry, we came here, we looked at the agenda, we were invited to this meeting, it was item number one.
What do you want me to?
Without any questions, without any requests for comments-
Okay, you have to go first.
-you just moved item one to the end. Is that appropriate? Is this? I'll take the other side, I'll just let you.
All right, please continue.
Okay, so, so we are here tonight because of an appeal of a, a DRC approval. The, the fact of the matter is, we have been designing this project and working with staff for the, over the, the past year on this project, under the, under the current policies that the town has in place. The only, only tools that an applicant has to, to design a house is the current policies. We rely on town staff, their knowledge of the policies, their, uh, past practice, and the Hillside Development Standard Guidelines. We are complying with everything. We have complied to everything, except for a couple of exceptions that are unavoidable on this project. We have done valid visual analysis, we have professional, uh, certified architects doing this visual analysis. It's, it's as, it's as, uh, high-tech as you can possibly get. I don't know if you guys have seen any visual analysis that we have gone through, but we have gone way over and above on this project. We've spent tens of thousands of dollars defending our approvals on this project, but it seems like we're in this never-ending loop here. I mean, you talk to, to Mr. Bourgeois, um, you know, you're asking him, "What, what's the solution here?" He doesn't even know what the solution is. The bottom line is, we have current policies we got to design to. We can't design to a moving target. So, to, to answer your question, is it fair to make us come in at this point after, after many months of working with staff? Absolutely not. We have current policies that we are complying with. So, I, I don't understand how an appeal can be turned over, especially on a complete policy change. You know, this, this whole, this whole, um, uh, visibility thing, it's gonna take months for you guys to figure this thing out. I mean, there is just, you know, we've got current policies, staff has drafted language to clarify the visibility analysis, but to, to defer this project, to defer all hillside projects, applications that come in the hillside, um, to the city, uh, for months until this thing gets resolved, is, is not right. You know, again, we are, we are way too long, we, and especially Lot 7, it, it's been, it's been seven months since we got that approved at DRC. We are now delayed another seven, you know, seven months, and we can't afford to be delayed any longer. This is, this is getting ridiculous here. So, again, it's a never-ending loop, and I don't see, I don't see any end in sight here. So, I am asking for Planning Commission's approval tonight on this, to, to actually deny the, deny his appeal. Now, back to, um, some of the comments that, uh, regarding placing ribbons in trees to try to identify, that's, that's absurd. You cannot climb a 40-foot tree and place ribbons on a tree. I, you know, for, for Lot 7, I climbed a tree 10-foot, and it was sketchy, but the only way to get ribbons up in a tree is with a boom truck, and you can't get a boom truck on a 25% slope. Um, a peer review, you know, again, these, these things are, these visual analysis are being designed with the highest, uh, technology available, and with staff's, uh, verification in the field, you know, a, a peer review is just, is unwarranted. There's, there's plenty of oversight as far as staff is concerned, and again, you're not only talking to a developer that can afford, uh, a peer review, but you're, you're now gonna try to implement policy that some guy doing a, a 500-square-foot, um, addition to his house is gonna have to do, uh, fly a drone in, have a peer review? It's just, you know, there's gotta be some, some common sense here. A mock-up site, Mr. Weissman brings up, build a, build a wall up, up on the site, you know, having a 25-foot wall of, 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 a mock-up of the site, uh, standing at 20, 25 to 35 foot with trees, not feasible. Um, uh, the other things that he speaks upon is deciduous trees. We are in obvious drought. All these blue oaks are, are struggling right now, and what we have done, and I haven't had the opportunity to talk about it, but what we are doing is, we are now implementing a monitoring program, a maintenance program of these trees. All the blue oaks on Lots 7, 8, and 10, we have water jetted them, we have mulched them, we are giving them water on a monthly basis, as recommended by the arborist. We are doing everything that we can to regain their health. So, there's a lot of things that, that we are doing, um, and again, this is kind of a, a odd situation, shifting this thing and allowing, um, this appeal to go first, 'cause it, it's, uh, is, it didn't seem right to me. But again, I, I think the fact that, um, we are doing everything that complies with town policy at this moment in time, we can't, you can't predict what you guys are doing, and you guys don't even know what's gonna be policy. We need to design to a town policy, and that's what we have done. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Talisfor?
Right. So, um, what? Thank you. Actually, in the Hillside Design Guidelines, I'm glad you said you need to design to town policy. In that policy, it says to design to the site. So, I'm wondering if you could help us understand if there could be any modification to this home on Lot 8 that would, um, bring it more into, uh, more into line with what we're looking for.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, because we have, besides the fill that I, as far as being an exception to the Hillside Development Guidelines, I, I just, um, explained earlier, that's the only access into the site. That's the only access to get into a garage. The size of the house, i- it's not the fact, it's the size of the house on this, on this site, it's the fact that it's a tough site, period. It's, it's, it's a steep lot. The, the, the real challenge here is the fact that you're, at the 30-foot front set bag, you're already 10 feet down below the grade. For example, Lot 7, Lot 10, you're two feet below street grade. So, you're forced to get down onto that site, and with the steepness of the slope, that predicates what, what your, your heights are gonna be. So, as far, to answer your question, we, we feel like we've designed a, a, a great product for this site. It fits, it fits great. We have, only have a couple of exceptions. Retaining walls that we have downhill of, of the, the site are actually implemented to preserve trees. So, again, the only exception that really is, 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 uh, of question here is the fact that there's a little bit of fill on, on the garage side, but again, it's unavoidable.
So, I want to ask a question. When you purchased this large amount of land, I'm very confident that you did an extensive amount of research on the size of the lots, uh, the cost per square foot of the lots, the, and including the visibility. And I think that, knowing the kind of developer you are, and the amount of exceptional work you do, that you were aware that on this large plot of land, there were gonna be lots that were going to be more difficult. Um, and while we all sympathize with the amount of time that you've put into it, and we, and we appreciate this, this makes it easier to have these discussions, we are tasked with the preservation of this town, which is why people want to buy a lot of property in this town, because it's beautiful, and we have these hillsides, and we work hard to make sure that what is built on those hillsides is perfect. So, I fully understand your frustration, and we feel it on our side, too, because we want to have things up there that complement our town. So, although some of the things that have been suggested may seem really ridiculous to you, there are things that we take very seriously, such as how can we identify the trees better? Maybe it's not putting ribbons in the trees, but I'm sure maybe you have someone that could come and provide additional information to us that would help with that process. Um, maybe it's helping us understand more- Maybe it's helping us understand more why that cellar had to be a vertical line straight down, instead of being stepped more into the slope, which, as I look at your cross-sections and compare it with the architectural drawings, could have been done. It's just a square footage amount for the cellar, but it could have been done. So I appreciate what you've done, but I hope that you can appreciate what we are also tasked with. And we are a very, we try to be a very compromise-minded commission. So I would be curious from you, as you've heard what's been discussed today, and we understand the difficulties of the site, but in our minds, that means you need to dig farther into your resources on how we can compromise on that site. So does it come with, you come up with a plan to identify the trees better? Do you look at how that cellar could be stepped differently, rather than it being a vertical plane straight from the front? Would you be willing to look at a few of those things and discuss those with us, and how we can look at moving this process forward for you, rather than continuing in the loop?
Well, the thing is, what we have provided as a design fully complies with Hillside Development Standards Guidelines. It does. What else could you require of us? I mean, the fact that that foundation steps, it's allowed per your guidelines, per the town policy. Visibility, we're under 25%. Town policy, anything under 25% is not a visibility. We are doing everything for the Hillside Development Standards Guidelines, guys. I just don't understand what it is that you want us to do. The house, are you saying you want a smaller house? Again, that's not going to change the fact that we have an exception on the driveway and the garage. It's not going to change the visibility of the site? I'm just trying to understand here, what kind of concession you want to give me, because again, this is a design, again, we put a lot of time into, in acknowledging that it's a very tough site, and we have designed this thing to meet the hillside and the town policies as solid as we can.
Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner O'Donnell.
Could you have subdivided the lots differently to get a different result on Lot 8? As far as lot sizes?
We were not involved in the tentative map process.
Okay. Thank you.
Just so you know, we did do a lot line adjustment to enhance it a little better than it was. It was actually worse. We did enhance it a little better, just so you know.
Thank you.
Two questions. First, I guess I should say that you are very frustrated. I would say that we're really trying to come to grips with a very important question, and that is, are we required to do something besides a mechanical application? That is, if it says 25, and it's 24, then are we just simply going to analyze how did we get to 24? Or is there some overriding issue, which is, how visible is it? And is there some visibility which less than 25 would nevertheless fly in the face of what we're trying to do? That kind of thing would be very, very difficult, and you'd only get more frustrated. Nevertheless, we have to look at that. So there are two matters that I want to ask you. One is, the appellant has basically said you can't identify the trees that make the screen, and therefore, it's very difficult to analyze what happens when you take out certain trees and leave others. You have, on the other hand, I think, shown us Google Earth, and it seemed to me what you showed us would allow identification of trees. Is it your position that Google Earth did allow you to identify the specific trees?
That was a tool that was used, but again, the other tool is getting on-site and making notes of exactly how these trees are relative to each other.
Well, is it your position, though? What I'm trying to get to is, the appellant suggests using a drone and all that, which is fine, I'm not attacking that. But then I heard you, and I thought, well, maybe there's another way to do it, too, and I think you said, we look at Google Earth, and then you said we also want other property. When I looked at your illustration of what Google Earth showed, the trees became much more distinctive, and you could zoom in. So the question to you simply is, do you believe that you identified the trees, the ones that would be left, the ones that would be removed specifically?
Absolutely. I think this visual analysis that we provided is as accurate as you can get. You know, there may be a little subjectiveness, but the accuracy that we have on this visual analysis, you can't get any accurate than what we have done. Even a drone, I don't think you can get as much information.
Okay. The other issue is, the only thing that I can see, that an argument goes as to visibility, if you for the moment forget the specific questions of percentages and counting trees, would be the size of the house being built. This house is something like 4,500 square feet, plus 765 or something like that, square feet, for the garage, so well over 5,000 square feet. That's a big piece of property, big lots of wood, or whatever else it's made out of. But your position is, if you made this a 3,000-square-foot house, there's no reason to believe it would be less visible?
I don't know. But I would say that it would be tough for the house to get any lower on the site. I think the roofline would basically need to be at the same height, the garages would need to be at the same location. So if you take the whole upper floor, the upper floor in itself is, upper floor is 4,000 square feet, the lower floor is not visible at all. So, I mean, the fact that, the thing with the houses, you have to have certain components on the main level. You can't just have a kitchen and then everything else downstairs. You've got to have a functionable, livable space upstairs, and that's what we provide.
Yeah, but 4,000 square feet, let's face it, is more than functional, livable space. That's a lot of functional, livable space. So what I'm asking you is, if the house were smaller, and we're only talking about the top part of it, that is, the part that may be visible, I don't quite understand how you can say that would not affect the visibility, unless you're saying, well, it doesn't, we don't need to do that because we're complying with the visibility requirements, period.
What I would say, again, this is all theoretical, I don't know, but the fact that the house cannot lower on that site, I mean, you're basically, again, there are many levels where it's going to be. As far as taking square footage out, I think all the impacts that everybody else is talking about, I don't think it's going to change. The upper level, again, it requires a kitchen, requires a family room, requires a living room, requires a, I mean, it's, there's components at this level of house that is compatible with the neighborhood. There's certain components you need to provide on the upper level. Though the garage-level part of it, which is where it needs to be, is an area where you can't even see it in the visual analysis. So that leaves the rest of the house over in the area that's visible.
This is the last time I'm going to do this, but I just want to say this. We're going to have to wrestle with this when you have no more chance to talk. So one of the things we are going to wrestle with would be, there's no reason one has to have 4,000 square feet on that top floor. There just isn't. Believe it or not, people live in houses that aren't 5,000 square feet. On the other hand, what I want to hear from you is why we shouldn't reduce it from, take a number, and I don't have any numbers in mind. If your argument is simply, we're doing what is legal and doggone it, that's what we ought to get to do, fine, that's your argument, and we'll deal with that. If, on the other hand, your argument is, if you reduce it, pick a number, from 5,000 feet to 4,000 feet, that's not going to help, then I just want to hear why it's not going to help. So that's really my question.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I'll try to respond to your question, that's why I stepped up here. The visual analysis that is in the staff report was analyzed from the viewing platform. At the viewing platform, Lot 8 was 2% visible, and that's with the analysis and visual analysis methodology that Steve has described. We then were asked to go down and look at it from another point, outside of the identified viewing platforms in the Hillside Design Standards and Guidelines. And we did that. At that point, it was 23% visible. If it were a smaller home, as you suggest, and I don't know what that size would be either, but if it were a smaller home, what's going to be less than 2% visible that's going to be acceptable from the viewing platform? The 23 might be reduced, and I acknowledge that 4% is a massive home, but it is, in keeping with one of the prior speakers opposing this, if you go in with something smaller, and you're reducing the size of the visibility of this, and you go, I'm sorry, he brought up that you go to 25% of a smaller home, or you go to 25% of what the neighborhood average is. This is the 15th house in this development to be before you. So if you take 25% of the average of all the rest of the homes in this neighborhood, you're going to come up to essentially the same size house as what I think we're proposing. We're all within the same size and scale of the community, and that's what the community was designed for when we started out. One thing that I think is worth noting, very quickly, is that if you look at the rendering, which is a 3D perspective from the end of the cul-de-sac, that's the colored rendering on the wall directly below the number four, this house does step down the hill, and it's not even really highly visible from the end of the cul-de-sac in comparison to some of the other homes that are out there. It's driven by a 30-foot setback on a very steep slope. It's almost a winged design so that it can work with a topography spreading out and going down the hill. A smaller home certainly could be designed. Is it going to be less visible than 2%? What do you request of us to be less visible? 2% is not much visibility, and that's from the viewing platform, and that's what the Hillside ordinance asked us to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right, thank you. We will now grant the appellant five minutes to address us.
So I'd like to start out by giving Mr. Kane some specific points from the Hillside Standards, because he asked, well, you were the one that was, I only have the one copy, you were the one that was most interested.
How about, as you read it, then you pass it on down the line?
They can certainly be passed along. Someone asked about the difference between 50-millimeter and a 300-millimeter lens. If you stand at the viewing point on Los Gatos Boulevard and look at the netting on Lot 7, you can't see it. But if you look at the house right next door to it, on Lot 6, the mass and bulk is readily viewable from Los Gatos Boulevard with the naked eye. The applicant discussed the fallacy of requiring peer review. We have peer review all the time for various documents in this town. In this case, the applicant and the architect have a financial liaison, and there's a conflict I'd like to go back and discuss a game the applicant is playing with trees 637 and 646 on Lot 8, both trees of which face the valley floor. Both of these trees are in poor condition and recommended for removal by Ms. Ellis, because they are essentially goners with low anticipated, even with low anticipated trauma from construction. But the applicant, in Exhibit A, says that they intend to preserve these trees. Now, this is what Ms. Ellis has to say about poor trees. These trees have significant structural defects or poor health that cannot be reasonably improved with treatment. These trees can be expected to decline regardless of treatment. So the applicant gets to count the trees for screening, and then soon afterwards applies to the town arborist to remove them. The arborist now finds himself between a rock and a hard place. Deny the permit, and when the tree drops a branch and hurts someone, the town gets sued. Or grant the permit and protect the town while providing the homeowner with a better view. Throughout their letters, Davidin claims that they are always in compliance with Hillside Standards and town codes. Davidin asks for fairness, which is an interesting statement from a developer who is now required to pay for mandatory monthly consulting arborist reports because of continued code violations on the Highlands. And these are violations and bad horticultural practices that have been pointed out by the consulting arborist as early as 2012. So imagine my surprise when I came across the following situation in July on Highlands Lots 7, 8, 9, and 10, and this after Davidin, in their letter to staff dated April 8, 2015, wherein they took umbrage to my assertion they had a graded without penalties, permits. So let's take a quick look at, this is from July. This is an intact oak woodland understory on the adjacent lots on Greenridge Terrace. These lots will eventually be coming before you. They're vibrant, they have lots of undergrowth, they are nurseries for future oaks. This is what I found on Lots 7, 8, 9, and 10 on July 15. All of this was done without grading permits. Now, noncompliance with the conditions of approval, requirement 60 says, grading permits will be issued concurrently with the building permit. Does this mean that the planning commission tonight can't approve any of these applications? Because none of these lots now satisfied their conditions of approval. And this has nothing to do with grading for defensible zones that's only 100 feet, some of this grading is 1,000 feet from any other structure. Yes.
All right, thank you. Any questions? No? Commissioner Kane, then Commissioner O'Donnell.
One, I was hoping we'd share that document with the applicant, so that they get to see it as well. And, Doctor, you mentioned conflict of interest, and I didn't hear in what context you're saying that there's a conflict of interest.
There's a possible conflict of interest because the architect who did the visibility calculations is hired by Davidin.
All right, so you're saying potential.
A potential conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I appreciate your comments, and I respect your expertise. I've obviously heard you before, and I appreciate your coming and sharing all the effort you do. Nevertheless, I'm still grasping and arguing with myself on this, because on the one hand, I have an applicant who says, we've done everything you've required, you've got this 25% rule, we, the applicant, didn't make that, you did, we're complying with it, it's 2%, not even close to 25%. I hear people on the other side of the coin saying, golly, this is a really big issue, it's a trendsetter, you ought to do something. And I say, well, what is it we ought to do? Well, we don't exactly know, because if you don't use some percentage, then is it, what do I think, or what does he think, or what does she think? How do we have some way to know? Well, how do you expect any applicant to come in and say, who am I making this for? You tell me who the judge is, and I've got some way to deal with it. So you can really help me if you tell me that there's some objective way, within the framework of what we have before us, to turn this project down as proposed.
First of all, on the 2% versus 25%, the viewing platform was number one in the list of five viewing platforms listed in the Hillside Standards. The first four are specific locations, the corner, in this case, but alternative five in the Hillside Standard says, alternative viewing platforms as deemed by the deciding body, which is you guys. In 2009, the town council took this head-on and decided to use common sense. If you can't see a site from near a viewing platform, but there are other sites within town, and again, the Hillside Standards are to decrease visibility from the valley, then you choose an alternative viewing site. To say that the site has 2% visibility because it's behind the Chevron sign makes no common sense. Lot 6, which I showed you earlier, has zero visibility because it's completely screened by the Chevron sign. But if you move 150 feet down Los Gatos Boulevard, you see the picture that I took. Clearly, there are a lot of issues here, and I think all of this speaks... Clearly, there are a lot of issues here, and I think all of this speaks to the wisdom of just saying, "Let's pull back. Let's think about a lot of these issues that we brought up tonight. Next month, we're going to have new visibility proposals, a draft coming forward from staff. And let's sit down and do all this, but not try to rush it through tonight." We've already spent almost two hours on this, and we've still got two more lots. And I think affording all of us the time to think about this stuff and to read the hillside standards and think about the intent of it, I think is a wise thing to do. There's no rush to judgment here.
Let me ask you, with the chair's permission, let me ask you this. When this viewing site is chosen, I assume, and maybe I'm wrong, that the staff approves the selection of the viewing site. Are you saying the staff does not approve it?
I don't know what staff did with Lot 6. I will tell you that no visibility analysis was required.
One, however, was performed.
As far as I know, no. Councilwoman Spector asked at the town council meeting in May if a visibility analysis had been done post hoc for Lot 6, and the applicant said no. Maybe they've done one now. I don't know.
That's interesting. They would send it back to us, again, then arguably not doing what they thought should be done and told us to solve the problem, but we'll skip that for a moment.
Well, I think part of the problem is that a lot of what was discussed in 2009 was forgotten. Town council made policy. They just were not speaking to that one application before them, and that information seems to have been lost.
Let me also get to this second issue then, too, that it would be perhaps more easy in my mind if we said we want a 30-day delay so something can really happen. But all that's going to happen, whether it's 30 days or 45 or whatever it is, is a draft is going to come out. And with all due respect, we are not noted for speed, so 30 days means almost nothing. We could be talking about this for the next six months. And I guess the thing, again, I'm wrestling with is I'm, I've lived here a long time, and I really do want to preserve the trees and all that. On the other hand, I want something that if an applicant comes in, well, if an applicant comes in, they can rely on something. So I'm trying to deal with, did they do what the town required? And if so, then we got 2% visibility, and that's pretty hard to deal with. Or do we have more subtle issues that, with all due respect to them, we're charged with coming up with and saying, "Sorry about this, but here's what we think." So that's, I just want to share with you what I'm wrestling with. So if you have any final advice on that, I'd appreciate it.
In her motion in 2009, Diane McNutt discussed how this was the first time the visibility issues in the hillside standards had come before the town council. As she said, it's a document in evolution, and now we're ready to take another big step in its evolution. And we're ready to do that because we now have an issue, applications which are relevant to those standards. And the document is 11 years old, and I think it is evolving, and I think it needs to be responsive to the times. And yes, it may take a little bit longer, but the viewing platform of 2%, that was not set in stone. The council in 2009 elected to use other viewing platforms, including Green Ridge Terrace, and that was specified just for that application. So to have the applicant move 150 feet to the right down Los Gatos Boulevard is not inconsistent with town policy. I mean, we can change, you can change town policy, but you can't ignore, I don't think, what's come before you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. All right. I'm now going to close the public portion of this agenda item and ask any commissioners if you have any questions of staff, comments. All right, Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have one quick question for the staff and then some comments. So there was an alternative, and it can be for whomever. There was a decision made to do a second analysis from, viewing analysis from an alternative site. What was the impetus or reason for doing that?
So the alternative site was chosen based on the conversation of council regarding Lot 7, and that the common sense, you move away from the viewing platform, what's visible, and when you move 150 feet south, the home was more visible.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I presumed. Okay, here's my comments, or some comments. So we've spent a lot of time talking about the detail of the calculations and how accurate they are and so forth. These kind of calculations, from my view, are proxy measures. They're not absolute measures. The only way to measure absolutely is to let the house be built and let the trees be taken down that need to be taken down, and then go measure that, measure the viewing thing. That's the only way. Any proxy measure has some margin of error to it. So my concern is I can't divorce myself from wondering, hmm, what's the margin of error? If the margin of error is 5%, I'm still under the 25. If the margin of error is 10%, I'm over the 25. If I use the 23% number. I can't also divorce myself from the fact that there are two other lots that we'll be hearing tonight, and they're pushing the envelope also in terms of the standard, I'm sorry, the guideline that was set to help one interpret the standard. The standard is to minimize, I'm going to paraphrase, minimize visibility. The guideline was there as a way to apply some guidance to the standard. It isn't the standard itself. So I'm sitting here wondering what the margin of error is. And we spent a lot, much more time than I would have ever spent in the detail of it, given that there's, it's a proxy measure. Then I'm also wondering, would I be thinking about this differently, I'm human, if the other two lots were not pending? If they hadn't ever started anything, and they were still vacant, and we didn't, and I didn't have rattling around in my brain the fact that I've got three that are pushing at, the proxy measures are pushing at the guideline. And so I would appreciate some guidance from staff. Can I take into consideration what's in my brain about the other two lots in this particular case? Or should I divorce, should I attempt to block that out at this point in time? So, because I might think about it differently if I've got a whole, if I've got three different ones that are all essentially pushing at the proxy measure that's helping us interpret the standard.
It's a very interesting question. Your guidelines and standards don't address that as a whole, on whether you should be comparing this as to what it's doing to the whole hillside as a whole, but they do address the fact that, you know, you're supposed to be preserving the views of highly visible hillsides. It does talk about it in generality and where it's all together, how it's going to flow and what's the visibility from all of them. So I'm not going to specifically tell you, you know, the hillside guidelines specifically say, "Take each lot individually." And I think you did, you framed the issues just perfectly. The whole viewing platform and the 25% is a guideline. It's really the standards that are set forth on your Page 15 is what you should be looking at and seeing how these lots fall within those standards. And so, you know, I don't know if that answered your question specifically, because I don't know there is a specific answer that says each lot should be handled differently because they are somewhat joined together.
Did you have a follow-up question to that?
I would just comment, one comment about Mr. Schles' response. So I assume if we shouldn't do it, you would have told us, "Don't do it." Okay, so you didn't tell us we couldn't do it. Okay, so then I don't have to attempt to extinguish that from my brain. Okay? So then it seems to me, the question that I will try to grapple with is, is this particular proposed residence consistent with the standard? And have they done the best they could do with this particular lot to meet the standard of limiting the visibility? That's really the question for me, and how it's in the context of other lots that are there and that are likely to be developed and come before this commission in some reasonably near time frame.
I was going to go Commissioner O'Donnell, then Commissioner Badami.
If I recall, really the testimony and the record correctly, there was 2% visibility from the relevant viewing platform. So a margin of error could be quite substantial before you get 25%. Would not be 10% because 10% wouldn't get you to 25%. But nevertheless, that's neither here nor there. Maybe my math is often wrong. I guess the question I have is, what did we do in this matter, if at all, on the viewing platform? One of the questions is, gee whiz, you used the wrong viewing platform. You had five more to deal from. Why in the heck didn't you get a different one? And obviously, that could make a difference. But then the question I have is, how did this occur? Did the applicant simply say, "I'm going to use this viewing platform. What do you think?" Or did they just do it? Or how did staff interact with that?
So are you referring to the alternate viewing platform that they came up with?
No, the standard station viewing platform.
Okay, so I'll paraphrase for the applicant, but they would look at all of the viewing platforms, all four of them, depending on, it may be visible from multiple platforms. So they would have to do multiple visible analysis. So in this particular lot, it was visible from the one platform at the Blossom Hill and Los Gatos Boulevard. So they did their visibility analysis from that platform. Based on the deliberation of council for Lot 7, they did an additional view analysis, and the 150 feet was discussed during that town council meeting, which is where that distance came from there for the alternate view analysis.
Your first statement, I must have misunderstood you. Did you say if it would appear that it is visible from all four stations, you'd do an analysis from all four stations?
Correct.
Who made the determination that it was only visible from one station?
So staff goes out and they verify, and they go to each platform, and they do verify that it's not visible.
Okay, so the staff's view was that it was only visible from one platform?
Correct.
And the result of that was a 2% visibility?
Correct.
And if you moved 150 feet away, that's where we get up to roughly 23, I think it was?
23%.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Badami, and then Commissioner Tausford.
I believe the issue for all three of these lots are actually interrelated, and that comes down to the visibility study. And when I look at the intent of the visibility study, it's to assure us that the houses will be hidden. I don't have that assurance. We've got different variables here on whether or not a tree is in fair or poor condition, should it or should it not be included? Do we look at the outline of a tree? Does that constitute screening? You know, foliage can be transparent or translucent. And the subjectiveness of interpretation of the tree analysis, I'm sorry, the visibility study, and that was acknowledged by the applicant, that there's a certain element of subjectiveness to it. So I kind of see it interrelated for all three lots. And at this point, I don't have that assurance that these houses will be hidden. I believe that they will be visible homes, contrary to the hillside standards and guidelines. I'd also like to add that on the hillside standards and guidelines on Page 5, that it establishes a framework for standards but acknowledges that stricter standards may be required to avoid potential impacts and to achieve the goals and objectives of the hillside design standards and guidelines. And the hillside design standards and guidelines talks about the potential for being visible. And there's fair argument that the home has, these homes have the potential for being That's what I have.
Commissioner Tausford.
Okay, I have a lot. I'm going to try to get it because so much has been said already. But I think talking about the visibility presentation that we've had so far tonight, when I consider it, I really felt that we had the developer on one side, and, you know, we're here with the hillside design guidelines, trying to protect our hillsides. And there's standards and guidelines, and they have to be melded together if one isn't as good as the other. So, but anyway, the data that was presented to me seemed like it was more toward the home as it's presented now. And in the design guidelines, it does say that it's, one of the purposes of these is that the developer, who has every right to develop his property, should work with the town or the deciding body or the review body, which would be us in this case. Speaking about that margin of error, I'm totally uncomfortable with that because in this formula that came up, that it was presented, there's more than mathematics here or cameras or lenses. There, in this formula that hasn't been put into the calculations, are living trees, and they're unpredictable. They're prone to disease, fire, winds, and sometimes they lose their leaves. They're pruned, and then they die. And with all of the construction around them, as Deborah Ellis referred to, and the compaction of, you know, the soil and trucks and backhoes and et cetera, and heavy equipment, 25% to me, or 24% or 23%, doesn't make me feel like I want to go with this because it's too much on the edge. You know, if it was more like 10 or 15, that would be in line with what the hillside design guidelines intent is. And so I'm going to use common sense for that decision, and that's my common decision, especially since all over these guidelines and standards, the idea is to minimize the building bulk and mass. Okay, that's that. When I asked the developer if they could modify the home or the structure, I was told that it just would be almost impossible. I don't really believe that. And mostly, I don't believe it because I don't believe enough effort was made in stepping down this hillside house. I see it, I saw a two-story elevation, box over box. 4,000 square feet is a very, you can live very well in that. And you can, this could be a split cellar. There's many ways to do it. I think that this probably needs to be reconfigured. And the fact that not every site, as it says in the design guidelines, not every site can be developed at a maximum density or intensity. And so I'm not making this up. This is what we have here. And that's what I'm going to say at this point. I would be ready to make a motion if...
Well, can I ask a couple of questions of staff before we do that?
Sure.
I have two questions. One, the applicant discussed how long this has been in the process, and I wanted to know if the layout that we're looking at now is the only layout that was reviewed with staff.
So the floor plan hasn't changed, but the grading and the retaining walls have changed by working with staff. They've reduced the amount of grading and flat pad yard area, and they've also reduced the retaining walls based on Debbie Ellis's report.
Okay, but the width of the house and the overall size and massing has stayed the same?
Generally, yes.
Okay. And then my second question was, it was mentioned that we should wait for this upcoming document about the hillsides and the changes in that. I'm curious, though, and we know what's draft coming in front of us, but, so this is more hypothetical, if we were getting a finished product or something we could work with, how does that apply to existing applications? If it's an application that hasn't been approved or gone through the full process, do we take the new guidelines and apply those?
the new guidelines and apply those? Because, or are those items somewhat grandfathered in, because they've already been through the process? I just, for clarity, that's what's been discussed.
I think what's important to keep in mind is that the methodology is really an elaboration on an existing provision in the document. So we're not making up new rules. What we're trying to do is create a methodology, so we can understand how that rule can be interpreted. So whether, you know, and whether we add a factor for margin of error, or some other piece, the basic elements of it are already in the document, in terms of the 25%. So we would use, you know, it is about how we amass our knowledge over time. So we understand that, you know, back in 2004, when these were adopted, there were certain principles and values. Those still hold true today, but our understanding of how this actually works in the field is different, because now we have homes that are actually built in the Highlands, and we can experience it, and we can look from the viewing platforms and see whether or not it actually is visible. So all of that informs the analysis that staff does, as applications are considered and evaluated.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Okay, Commissioner Kane, then Commissioner O'Donnell, and then Commissioner Talisfor.
In my head, I'm still dealing with the step-down issue, and page 18 of the guidelines, and Commissioner Talisfor, he covered it, so I'll be brief. In the middle picture on Charlie 2, provided by the applicant, there is a big old rectangle stuffed into the side of the hill. The earth is cut to accommodate the stuffing in, and then the earth is spread out to accommodate the length of the building. And I was told that was a step-down. That wakes me up, 'cause I don't see anything stepping down. And I keep looking at the do-this and don't-do-this, and then I looked above it. So my question for staff, in looking at Charlie 2, and in particular, the garage, where a whole bunch of ground is cut up and relayed, the one above, the provision above the do-this, don't-do-this picture, which is worth a thousand words, "Graded areas shall not be larger than the area of the footprint of the house, plus that area necessary to accommodate access, guest parking, and turnaround areas." Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but is not the footprint of those structures bigger than the areas being graded?
So the grading, or, I'm sorry, the garage you're talking about, so what you're seeing is you're actually seeing the fill, and that's the fill exception that they're asking for due to the topography and the steepness of the slope. So that line, the gray dash line, that's the existing grade, and then they're filling that up to create that pad for the garage.
So maybe what I said was right, and it's covered by, well, yes, and that's what we're asking an exception for. All right. Okay. They're asking an exception on the grading. I don't see the step-down, and I'm really stuck with that. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
As it presently stands, it would appear to me that any significant project would almost be foolhardy on the behalf of an applicant, because it's virtually impossible to tell what we require. Because we do have a mechanical rule, which was 25%. In fact, this project is offering 2%. You can talk about margins of error all you want to, but 2% versus 25% is pretty loose. Now, I'm not saying we should have a possible situation, but I am saying I can understand the frustration of the applicant. As far as the step-down goes, I don't think that's got anything to do with what we're doing tonight. If all we were talking about is you ought to have a step-down, we could address that. But what we're really talking about is visibility. And we have had no testimony as to what the visibility is, more than the 2%. There's a general feeling that there's more visibility here. Now, this is a perfect neighborhood to find out what the visibility is, 'cause we've got a number of houses built. On the other hand, these are perhaps the three worst lots from a visibility standpoint. I guess I feel bad, because protecting the trees is great, maybe that's what we should do, but until we make this understandable, why would an applicant, any applicant, go through this? And if our goal is to make sure no applicant goes through this, you have a wonderful result from the standpoint of visibility, because you don't build anything. And maybe that's what we're doing. That bothers me. I don't know what it is we heard tonight, which suggests that the visibility, as proposed, is anywhere near 25%. I don't know where we heard any testimony that the trees were going, the significant number of trees that might die, now, hell, they might all die, but the significant amount of trees that might die would, we could, one, count on that, and, two, therefore, conclusion. The people who did the studies didn't say that at all. So we have a malaise up here, and it may be a good one. But there's no evidence, and that's the thing that bothers me. The evidence before us is there's a 2% visibility. I really have problems with that. It doesn't mean I'm going to turn down the appeal, because maybe we do need a general revision. I don't have a lot of optimism that anything we do is gonna make the subjective nature of visibility objective. We did that by making it 25%. That's as objective as you get. Maybe wrong, but pretty darn objective. So I am very troubled. If we do this now, we should clearly do it on all three of them, I think. Might save a lot of time. And then I simply hope that somebody who's really good at drafting that hasn't been good at drafting before. And I think they haven't been good at drafting before, because it's a subjective issue we're dealing with. You can have a range of subjectivity, which I thought was 25%, maybe it should be 50%. I don't know. But this whole evening really troubles me from the standpoint of objectivity, evidence, and the idea that are we telling applicants, "Don't bother"? And maybe that makes everybody feel good. It just seems basically unfair to me. So that's my feeling.
Actually, based on what you just said, I'm gonna ask staff, for everybody's sake, to clarify where the 23% number came from.
The 23% is from the alternate view analysis, 150 feet south of that Blossom Hill-Los Catos viewing platform. That's the 23% where that came from.
Okay. Just wanna clarify. Wait, hold on. I had Commissioner Kane, Commissioner Erickson.
I just...
You wanna ask a follow-up question to that? Okay, go ahead then.
So, in my interpretation, was that that was done consistent with the fifth alternative for a viewing platform, which allowed, which allows the deciding body to choose another viewing platform that might be better, or I can't quote the words. So I was acknowledging that that might be a better viewing platform than simply strictly behind the Chevron Station. That's all. So that's, for me, Tom, that's the evidence that I was using to do. So, it's in the staff report, and they did an alternative analysis based on the fifth option of a viewing platform.
Could I just ask a question? I heard, I asked her that question. Five or four viewing platforms, did you determine that it could only be seen from one? And she said, "Yes," which would indicate to me that the other three, staff said, "You couldn't see anything." That's the case, you had one choice, and that's the one they took. Now, maybe I misunderstood her.
So there is a provision in the hillsides that an alternate viewing platform can be used and compared, which in this case, the applicant has done, based on direction for the previous lot on Lot 7. So technically, from the four platforms, they were 2% visible from one that's called out, and the provisional alternate view analysis, the hillside allow us four, they were 23% visible.
All right. Commissioner Kane, did you have a question?
Commissioner O'Donnell has a gift for framing an issue, and is very persuasive. I always feel at risk when I disagree with him.
Never know it.
We have before us an appeal of a DRC ruling, and in the application summary, in the recommend, it doesn't say anything about visibility. You know, visibility's come up as a reason why we should do this, but I think, I think what's at stake, and we've all said it indirectly, is the hillside standards and guidelines. So if I have a rectangle slammed into a mountainside, I do think that's very relevant, and not to be ignored, nor, as, what do you say, this cross of gold? Who said that? William Jennings Bryan? I wouldn't put a cross of gold on this 2% business. It's whether or not you can see it. And this is a big, easy-to-see, and we need to take a position and give some guidance that we're gonna protect the hillsides.
Thank you. That was a great lead-in. And my sentiments exactly, the visibility is one way that we evaluate a project, but actually, I look beyond that, and I was looking at the stepping down the slope, and I cannot see it, and it wasn't explained to me that that was happening. So I do have to take exception, and that's what I would base this appeal, my motion, on. What I don't know, though, and I'm wondering, because my motion is going to be to uphold the appeal, how do I do this? Do I start the motion and then ask?
Look on page 8.
No, no, it's not that. I would like to hear from my commissioners, because there's several options we have here. We can either grant, there's, if you all would read that, I would like to have some guidance. I mean, I'm somewhere between...
It appears that we could either grant, depending on which way you're gonna go, with directive to the DRC, or just grant the appeal and deny, or continue. So I think you've got a range of options, depending on what your comfort level is.
Right. So that's what I'm looking at.
Commissioner Erickson?
Hearing, I wouldn't mind hearing from my fellow commissioners on that before I take that step, if that's all right. May I, Chairman? Okay.
Just have a question for staff. We actually have an appeal in front of us tonight, and if one reads the appeal, the only issue brought up in the appeal is visibility. So, in making a judgment on the appeal, are we or are we not limited to that issue only in making a judgment on the appeal? And if I see you're sitting, nodding your heads, "No," why aren't we, why do we have liberty to consider a whole range of other issues?
This is a de novo hearing. So whenever an item is appealed, on whatever grounds the appellant might raise, you become the new hearing body, and you hear it brand-new, as if it's never been heard.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Getting to the question that was asked of us, assuming for the moment that the appeal will be granted, that I would help that we would state the reasons why. Because I would agree with Commissioner Erickson, as far as I was concerned, this afternoon, except with one or two exceptions, was about visibility. If, in fact, the issue is about the way it's graded, then we should say so, because that could be addressed much more easily than the subjectivity of visibility. But I think that would be a mistake, because I think the real issue is visibility, because these folks could come in and do whatever they wanted with that hill. But there's no question that's not gonna get to the issue of visibility. Because what is it then? Is it 2%? Is it 4%? Is it 10%? Is it 30%? Is it no percent? That's what I'm having trouble with. I don't have a problem if somebody says, "I don't think you followed the two little drawings that were up on the board," and send them back and say, "Do something with that." That could be done. And if that's the basis of the appeal, and that's the basis of the decision, we should say so. I wouldn't recommend it, but you should say so.
Commissioner Kane.
Well, Commissioner O'Donnell knows what de novo means. I don't, but I'd say what the applicant, what? Thank you. I would say what the applicant needs to do is focus on the hillside guidelines, and the things we've talked about, grading, visibility, step-down, size, the site, there's issues in here on the structure be compatible with the site. Those are the things we're talking about indirectly, and I think staff can help them with that.
So, Commissioner Kane, from what you've said, and what I've heard Commissioner O'Donnell say, that you would be looking, if we were to grant the appeal, we would be asking the DRC re-look at this with some direction, rather than granting the appeal and simply denying. Is that the, what I'm hearing you both say, that would be your preference?
I'm not sure I'm saying DRC. Depends on what Commissioner Talisfori means. I'd like to take another look at it.
Okay, all right.
Just one thing. The only reason I talked about that was the alternative suggestion by staff, which is, if you don't wanna prove it, grant the appeal and remand the application to DRC with direction for revision. Now, if it's our decision, we're not gonna follow that, fine, we should say so. But if we're gonna follow that, then I guess we should come up with directions. And if it means the blanket that Commissioner Kane just said, that's kinda gone with the wind. So if we can be helpful to them, that would be kinda nice. So if people wanna say why, if Commissioner Kane wants to say it's because of something specific, which he has said at least once, as well as other things, I'm just saying, the directions should be helpful. So if we can come up with the directions, that'd be great.
Well, then, okay. So I would make the motion to uphold the appeal on Architecture and Site Application S-15-001 at 15371 Centella Court, Lot 8. And I would do that because I cannot make the findings that the project is consistent, at this point, with the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines, that the project is consistent with the Hillside specific plan, or that the project is consistent with Plan Development Ordinance 2237. And I would say that we would grant the appeal, or, and I would like to continue it, the application to a date certain, with direction to staff and the applicant for desired revisions, and to come back to the planning commission.
Question of staff, that was one of the four items, so is that...
That is an option that the planning commission can use.
Okay. Commissioner Erickson, then Commissioner Badami.
So I need to ask clarification on the motion, because I heard the motion, the maker of the motion say that she wanted to grant the appeal. In the same motion, I heard her say she wanted to continue the item. Those are two different actions, from my perspective, so I don't understand what the motion being made was.
I understand what you're saying. Okay. So instead of granting the appeal, we could continue the application to a date certain, with direction to staff and the applicant for desired revisions, but I would like it to come back to the planning commission.
Okay. All right. Commissioner, sorry, actually, Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner O'Donnell. Sorry.
I'm gonna second the motion.
Okay. Any other, Commissioner O'Donnell?
We've given no direction to the applicant. Well, wait a minute, let me just finish.
Do it now.
We've given no direction to the applicant. We're gonna give them a date certain, and say, "Go do something. You don't comply with anything," is what we've said. You don't comply with anything. Just look in there and find out what you don't comply with, and correct it, and come on back. Why would we do that? I mean, if you wanna tell them what they didn't do, tell them. Or, if you wanna say they didn't do the whole shooting match, just grant the appeal. Then they lose, and if they wanna appeal that, they can. But I mean, to say, "Come back in 30 or 60 days, and what you didn't do was comply with the whole thing," is a waste of time. So if you wanna, I'm, obviously, you can do as you wish, but if you could help them, maybe they could do something beneficial.
And that would be, my next comment would be, that I would ask for my fellow commissioners to weigh in on that, because everyone did have some ideas about this lot and this house design. So with that, I wasn't quite finished with my motion.
Right, understood. Thank you. So I would make a comment to that.
Is there a second? You have unfinished motion? Right here.
If we could, if I could get a clearance a little bit on the motion, is that, I think from a standpoint, you should be either granting, and it looks like that's where you're heading, you should be granting the appeal at this point, not doing a continuance. If you do not want it to go back to DRC, it can come directly back to here. If you're using number three just to continue the application, that's fine. That's not granting the appeal, though.
Yes, I know that. I corrected myself.
Okay, so you're just continuing it with no...
Continuing it, yes. I corrected myself. And I apologize if this was a rather awkward motion, but, you know, this is a rather... And I apologize if this was a rather awkward motion, but, you know, this is a rather contentious subject right now, so.
So then, to be very clear to the seconder, that you are seconding a continuance. Is that understood?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Erickson?
I guess I would, since Commissioner Talisfori took it upon herself to make the motion, she must have some comments and some direction that she would like to give to the applicant. So I'd prefer to hear hers before I commented.
Okay. It's really based on the fact that the applicant, well, the developer before us, said that they've been at this for a long time. And my motion really is to tell you that I sincerely hope that you will work with what we have to work with as well. And you've heard what we've said tonight. So it was because of that frustration you had, I wanted you to know that we were not, I was, I'm not willing to let it go. Okay? I do want you to continue working with us, so we can get this right. Okay? And that's why I made the motion. And in my, before, in my comments, I said that I felt that this house could be reconfigured to be more in keeping with the Hillside Design Guidelines. It might even reduce some of the visibility. Who knows? I don't know. But that is my comment. So it could be a split cellar. It could, you could step that cellar out. I think that we have some other people that have some comments as well. But that is my goal, is that you reconfigure, you modify to the site.
All right. I'll make my comments, then following that. And I'm going to be even probably a little bit more specific. There's a visibility calculation sheet, 300 millimeters for Lot 8. That is where this 23% visible comes from. Taking a look at that exact drawing, looking at the outline of the trees, that will be the screening, you can see the massing over that, that creates the 23%. When I asked staff if they had seen other footprints or other layouts of this house, the answer was no. We've only been working with this one singular layout. So then my direction would be to take a look at this drawing, and what's creating the overage beyond that. Look in those specific areas of design and see how that ridge line can be reduced. If it is, you know, actually, I'm not going to design from the dais. I just would like for those to be the very specific areas that are looked at for potential redesign, whether it's through roof adjustments, or a ceiling height is lowered, something like that, to bring that down. So I'm going to be that specific on my input on that. As far as the fill and grading, I understand what Commissioner Kane is saying. However, I also did go out and walk the site. And if you start looking at rainfall and the way that that slope is, that's going to be difficult. I do see that, do you think the cellar could be moved in a little bit? I just am not sure it would be enough to make a substantial difference, just on the way that the house has to be fundamentally supported on that percentage of a slope. So I would leave that to Mr. Kane's recommendation on what he would like to say. I'm going to be more specific on this exact drawing and the 23% that's shown on that drawing. So that's your cue, Mr. Kane.
Commissioner O'Donnell likes specificity. I like compliance. And the Hillside Guidelines are written, as their staff is familiar with these things, they could probably help. To give specific guidance, you know, so much of this is general. It needs to conform to the site. If the house is too big, what is it? If the glove don't fit, you must, if the house is too big, then it shouldn't be there. And the reality of that is this, you know, every time I go up there, I'm reminded that the houses are huge. They're all in compliance with the square footage, whatever it is, 6,000 with a 24,000 garage for 18 cars, I don't know. But the problem is going to be having a smaller house in that neighborhood. That may not fly with the overall culture or appeal of the dwelling. So I appreciate that they may be between a rock and a hard spot. They've picked a 30, 25% slope, and they can't get a 6,000-foot house in there as currently lines both sides of the street. So that is a sticky wicket. And I am sympathetic to that, because they're stuck with it. We did it, we allowed it to this degree. Now we have a de novo. And I, you know, the guidelines all apply. There's no specific guidance for me. Work with staff, comply with the guidelines. We've heard three speakers tonight who have great reputations with the town, have done great service to the town. And they've said, "Hillside Guidelines are on the ropes. This is it. This is a decision." I also heard somebody say, "None of the other houses are visible." So if that's true, then visibility is certainly an issue. If you can't see the other ones, fine, they comply with the guidelines. If you can see this one, they may not comply. How do you get a smaller house up there with the big houses all around it? I don't know. Commissioner O'Donnell will probably be in disbelief, but we may need to be flexible on this, because the die's already been cast. To put a 2,000-foot outhouse in the midst of the 6,000 other guys is going to make for a very difficult situation. And I don't want to put them in that spot.
Commissioner Erickson?
So since I, since it's my understanding from the maker of the motion, that the direction that we're giving is to be incorporated into the motion, is that correct?
That's what I intend.
Okay. So then, I want to be sure I understand what I'm voting for. So here's my understanding of the direction that's included in the motion. That Commissioner Chair Birch wants less visibility. That's what I took from what she said, when it was boiled down. What Commissioner Kane wants is more conformity to the site, the slope of the site. So then, we're continuing the item and giving direction that says, "Less visibility." We want less visibility than is presently there. Whether one wants to use 2%, 23%, we want less visibility. I don't know. Anyway, and we want better conformity to the site. That's the direction we're giving and would be inherent in the motion. Is that correct, maker of the motion?
Actually, Chair Birch had many other suggestions that I hope were recorded and would be included in the motion. She was very specific. And my, and part of what I said was, I wanted to see a modification, a reconfiguration of this house or another. And that's in the motion, I hope, as well, as direction.
If I missed the other direction coming from the chair, I'd like to understand what it was, because it went by me.
So very specifically, I was looking at the alternate viewing platform drawing that showed it to be 23%. If you look at that and you look on the ridge lines, the ridge lines are the master bedroom, the second garage, and another portion that pops out from there. So my direction was, I would very much like for them to look at how they may reduce that ridge line. I didn't give a percent, because that, as we've all discussed, is subjective. But as we've advised other applicants in the past, without being detailed to the number of inches or feet that we're requesting, I would like to see a reduction in the ridge line based on that exact viewpoint, to reduce that massing.
I just paraphrased that, "Less visibility," but that's okay.
Okay. So, maker of the motion, with all of those items now implemented, which I assume she doesn't need to repeat all that verbatim, that staff has taken that all down. So we have a motion, and we have a second. So do all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. That passes four to two. We also need to set this for a date certain. And I'm, as I've done in the past, I'm actually going to open the public portion to the applicant to discuss the date certain. We are at August 26th, based on our upcoming agendas. Ms. Pravetti, what date do you feel would be viable?
I imagine this is going to take some time for the applicant to be able to respond to. I'm not sure if you'd like to reopen the public hearing.
Oh, I just did, yeah. So if you wouldn't mind coming back up to the podium to look at the calendar with us, to let us know, if you look up at the calendar there, all the boxes in yellow are our upcoming meetings. And let me know what your thoughts are on when you would like to return.
Okay, so why don't we continue this, if we can, to October 28th? Is that the, wait, I'm sorry, October 20th?
No, we're yellow. You were right the first time, the 28th.
October 28th, please.
Does that work for everyone? Does that work for staff? All right. All right, I'll close the public portion, and it will be continued to a date certain of October 28th. Are there any appeal rights or anything in this? All right. So two things, we're going to take a very quick break. And then, this is probably where I'm going to do a quick apology. At the beginning of this, I had moved, I had misread the length of time that this was going to take. I had moved CVS to the end, and I very much heard the gentleman and his frustration. We had, I'm going to go ahead as soon as we come back from our very quick bio break. I'm going to call item one back up and apologize for all the people that have waited, and then we'll roll into the other. So I apologize for moving all over the place, but I definitely heard you. And we will see this as soon as we get back. Calling back to order the Planning Commission meeting. So we are now going to hear what was item number one. A Plan Development Application PD-11-005 and Negative Mitigation ND-11-007 at 15600 and 15650 Los Gatos Boulevard. They're requesting approval to change from Zone CH to CHPD to demolish existing commercial buildings and construct a new super drugstore with drive-through services and adjacent commercial buildings. This is APN numbers 424-14-028 and 036. Are there any disclosures of any commissioners? Has everyone had an opportunity to visit the site? Wonderful. Ms. Savage, I hear you'll be giving us the report tonight.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This project is before you, after being before you several other times in the past. The applicant at the direction of the Planning Commission and request of the community had a second community meeting in July. There are revised plans in your packet that reflect direction from you, based on previous meetings, as well as taking into consideration comments that the applicant received from the community members. These changes include changes to the site and the architecture. The revised plans include an entry plaza with benches and shade trees at the corner. The architectural changes include using stone at the entry features, instead of stopping it towards the top of the arch, bringing it all the way up to the underside of the The architectural comments also include increasing the height that's along the eastern property line in between office property and multifamily residential property, increasing that wall from six feet to eight feet, and adding, oh, I already mentioned the stone, apologize about that. They have removed their request for a 24-hour store at this time. They are still including a request for a drive-through. This drive-through, I wanted to make clear, is not prohibited by town code, and there are other drive-throughs within town. And the impact and intensity of the drive-through was analyzed based on existing CVS Pharmacy drive-through service windows. The applicant proposal still includes something called a Minute Clinic. This is a service that CVS Pharmacy is using in some of their stores. And this service provides minor services provided by both nurses, physicians, as well as, I'm sorry, physician assistants and nurse practitioners. No emergency medical services are provided. And the square footage of the space that they use, although it does vary between stores, is quite minimal, approximately 400 square feet, but it does vary between stores. They are asking for a parking exception request. This parking exception request is based on the future proposal, or a future proposal, for a restaurant within 3,600 square feet of the secondary retail building. And that 3,600 square feet, they're anticipating would have 108 seats. And that's where the parking exception request would come from. It is feasible that, at the time that a conditional use permit is applied for, which is required for the restaurant, that they would propose a restaurant with less seats, but the applicant is requesting an exception at this time. In order to request that exception, the applicant did a parking analysis, and that was reviewed by our traffic consultants. And they found that, based on the professional judgment of traffic consultants and engineers, that the shared parking analysis, shared between the different users, between the retail building, the secondary retail building, and a future restaurant, would actually serve the needs of a parking demand. At past Planning Commission meetings and community meetings, several questions have been raised regarding traffic and bicycle lanes. The development requires many traffic improvements. And those, a conceptual plan is included in your packet. There is an error in the staff report. The conceptual off-site improvement plan is on sheet DR-5.2, not 5.3. And the performance standards that require the off-site improvements is number 80, not 76. And that performance standards includes off-site improvements to add a second lane to the southbound Los Gatos Boulevard traffic turning left onto Los Gatos Almaden. It also includes maintaining the existing westbound bike lane on Los Gatos Almaden, and adding a charo for the bicycle traffic turning right onto Los Gatos northbound. And this would indicate to users that the bikes can take the full right turn dedicated One of the issues that came up with traffic was the potential conflict between left turns and right turns, coming from Los Gatos Boulevard and entering onto Los Gatos Almaden and traveling east. If you go out to the site today, there is one lane coming from southbound Los Gatos Boulevard, and one lane coming from northbound. The northbound lane from Los Gatos Boulevard has a yield sign, and that yield sign would be maintained or replaced. In addition to that, there would be markings on the ground added, if deemed appropriate by our traffic engineer, to further indicate the need to yield. When two lanes, when the two lanes turn left from southbound Los Gatos Boulevard, there would be signs that the traffic would merge. And this would reduce conflicts. There would also be a bike lane added for the eastbound traffic on Los Gatos Almaden In relation to the trees, we did have the arborist consultant go out recently and look at the current condition of the trees, and two of them have declined to a point where she would recommend their removal. However, the applicant is maintaining seven magnolia trees along Los Gatos Boulevard and Los Gatos Almaden. And the staff recommends that their landscape plan be revised at the Architecture and Site Application stage, to make sure that the water needs for the plants around those magnolias matches the water needs of the magnolias. One of the comments that the applicant heard from the community at the community meeting was in relation to the lights in the parking lot. And there's a few factors that came into play. One is that the applicant is willing to turn the parking lights off... One is that the applicant is willing to turn the parking lights off at a certain time. The staff report says 10:00 PM. That is when the store closes, but the applicant does need to maintain the lights on until 11:00 PM, an hour after store close. So that would be a change, not from what was told to the community, but rather from what staff understood. So that would be one change. The applicant is amenable to the 15-foot height limit. And they are also amenable to the design of the light posts. And that was provided in Exhibit 36. And that's in the lower left-hand quarter of Exhibit 36 showing more a traditional style of a light fixture. In summary, the project would allow the redevelopment of the vacant auto dealership, which has been vacant for several years. Their project complies with the commercial design guidelines, the Los Gatos Boulevard plan, the architectural consultant comments, as well as considering the conceptual development advisory committee comments. This current revision addresses concerns and comments from both the public and the planning commission. This concludes staff presentation and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner King.
The two lanes that are going to turn left as you head south on LGB. My office is not far from this location, so I go by it a number of times a day. If I said, "Do you think they're long enough?", you would say yes and I would have nowhere to go. But I would ask you to keep open the final design of those lanes with respect to their length. It looks like there's room to make them even longer if necessary. The queue, traffic is increasing in town. It has more, not just the beach, it's prosperity, employment, et cetera. The queue on that left-hand turn often goes into the southbound lane. And if we had two of them there, it could get sticky. So I would ask the engineers or whomever to be very certain about the adequacy of that length. My second question concerns the drive-through. The sites that were noted for drive-throughs, Jack, the cleaners and the bank, I went to those three sites because I was concerned about the diagram. In order to access the drive-through, the driver has to cross oncoming traffic and then re-enter against crosscoming traffic. And even at Indy, they let you get off with the traffic and get back on with the traffic. Do you think that that could possibly be a safety concern? Because driving across traffic is not a condition at those other three locations. Am I clear about what I'm saying? You're proceeding toward the drive-through and the traffic is coming at you and then you have to go in there. And then to get back out into that lane, you've got to go through the traffic coming. And I thought, well, that's an interesting way to get in and out of that spot. You think that's an issue?
I don't know that it's an issue at this time, but I certainly think it's a consideration that we need to make. That consideration would include what appropriate markings, what markings are appropriate, both on the roads and also directional signs within the site to make sure that there are minimal conflicts with that oncoming traffic. So we will certainly make that part of our evaluation, on-site circulation specifically for the drive-through.
The report also said that anticipation of a two-minute stop at the window. I do a walkthrough at the pharmacy and wait for 30 minutes. Can they really process a customer in two minutes at that window?
May I refer that question to the applicant, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? No? Thank you, Ms. Savage. So we'll now open the public portion of this item and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to 10 minutes. Mr. Mallard, I believe. Yes. You'll have 10 minutes. Please be sure to pull the microphone close and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Michael Mallard, Bozavell McGroup. We are the preferred developer for CVS on this project. As Ms. Savage had mentioned earlier, this project has been presented to the planning commission a few times. It was last presented in December, I believe December 10th of last year. We have heard the commission's concerns and we have listened to the neighborhood concerns and we believe we have come up with a good compromise based on past submissions. And we are very convinced that we've presented a good compromise here tonight. So as was mentioned, we held a neighborhood meeting on July 9th. We advertised out to 1,000-foot radius to make sure we included much more of the neighborhood in the, in the design concept for this project. Things that were taken into consideration through that meeting and past planning commissions were our architecture, specifically the plaza design at the hard corner, light, site lighting, as well as, as traffic. And to answer the question that was posed before on the two minutes, you know, the times that were taken were based on average CVS drive-through times on other stores within the area. So it's a little bit different when you go into the store than it is when you go through the drive-through. The drive-through, all you're getting there is your prescription that you've already called in and basically you're driving up and it's ready for you and there's someone at the window to provide it to you. In addition to that, we have, we've also brought our entire consulting team here tonight to hopefully answer all of your questions in a very thorough manner. With that being said, we are available to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Badami.
With respect to the prescription that may have already been called in, did you take into consideration that a customer just would drive up to the window thinking they could drop off their prescription before it's even filled?
If, if a customer did that, they would be, they would be told at the window that they can't process their prescription in that manner.
Will there also be a loudspeaker, a speaker system at this drive-through window?
There is a speaker, yes.
Okay, one more question, please.
Let me back up. There is a speaker when you get to the window that someone can talk to you through the window. It's not a speaker like at a fast food restaurant that's out around the corner with, you know, menu.
Okay, one, one more question, Madam Chair. Typically, a pharmacist, when they hand you the prescription, they give you instructions about how to take the medication, maybe where to apply the cream, I don't know, whatever have you. So I'm a little concerned about privacy issues. You've got a pedestrian area. Is there going to be a pharmacist there at the window or is it just going to be a clerk that's working the window?
Well, there's always a pharmacist in the pharmacy, but as, as far as how that consultation goes between the, the customer and the pharmacist, that I would have to defer to CVS on. And we have a gentleman from CVS here tonight who can possibly answer that question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talusfor.
Two quit, I know, I'm, just a minute. Okay, I have two questions. One was a follow-up, but it sounds like I should wait until the CVS representative gets up to speak and that, that would be about the drive-through as well.
You know, you can ask questions and they can come up because essentially it adds into their 10 minutes.
Just as an add-on to where Commissioner Badami was questioning, my question to you is, will there be an employee dedicated to that drive-up window? So that the expediency of the cars going through and getting their prescriptions happens? Or will that, whoever mans that window, will it be like it is at my bank? Where I drive up and sometimes they're not there and I have to, you know, I call for them and then they come over and they say, "I'll be right with you" and then they go back and they wait on, you know, they finish the transaction with someone else. So that's going to be my question. But besides that, my other question, you're the ones that, you had the meetings with the neighbors?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll go there in a minute, I'm sorry. So what I wanted, you said that you addressed the neighbors' concerns. Would you share those concerns with us? And the ones that you, the ones you could, the ones that you could address and the ones that you could not address?
Well, I, I can, I can give you an overview of what we addressed. The neighbors would probably have to tell you the ones we didn't address. So there was...
Were you at the meeting though?
Yes, I ran the meeting, yes.
So you would know the ones that you did not address?
Well, it was, it was more of a free-flowing conversation with the neighbors. We tried to take in all their comments and address them. You know, I don't remember there were 30-something people there. I, you know, I don't remember every comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, the ones you did address.
So I could, the stone that was asked for us to add stone to the, to the, to the front of the store, the stone was added. The request to, for the LED lights in the, in the parking lot lighting to be reduced and to be similar to the lights that were installed at the, the new development with the Phil's Coffee in it. We've, we've matched those light fixtures. Trying to think of what else. The, the operations, we're not requesting 24-hour operations. The wall that separates us from the residents is going to be decorative in nature. That's all I can think of right now.
Commissioner King.
It seems silly to be concerned about the drive-through because I'm sure it's not your first rodeo or drive-through. In other words, it works other places. I just don't see it, how it works, given my own experience of being in line at a pharmacy where people ask all kinds of questions and you may have a person at that window telling people to keep going, keep going, keep going. Unless it's, how do you do it? You put up a sign and says prescriptions only?
Hi, my name is Steven Labange. I'm CVS Real Estate for Northern California Portions, not everything. I live in Contra Costa County. I've been involved with this project for about three years, so not from the very beginning, I didn't work for CVS. I have been at the previous two meetings with you. I think I spoke at the last one about Minute Clinic. I was also at the community outreach with Mike and Tony and the rest of the crew. So to specifically answer yours, and I'm going to try to kind of pick them all, so if I miss something, just redirect me, please. There's always a pharmacist in the pharmacy when it's open. There's, and there's techs and, you know, those are the assistants, the techs. The way the pharmacy is designed in the store is such that it's usually in the corner, the back corner. And I say usually because most of the stores here are old long stores and it was a different format then and so that's not usual. But the one we're proposing, which is, which is how I would say we would do it with a drive-through, is it has the pharmacy in the back with the window there such that the pharmacist is looking and the pharmacy techs are looking at the front and the window is right here. So if there's a person there, plus there's typically a bell inside or some mechanism that says, "Hey, there's a car there." And they're, you know, and we try to be customer sensitive, so the initiative is to get there and address it. Now, as it pertains to confidential and discussions, you know, that's on a case-by-case pharmacist, you know, person picking up their prescription. Typically, if someone, I would think, and I, I don't use farm, I don't have a need to, so I'm not necessarily picking them up. I don't have that experience, but my wife does and, and I've talked to people who've done and I've seen it, of course, because I work there. But typically that is used for people who, like Mike had said, have called in and are picking up. Or sometimes they come in, they come in and make it then and then park and then do whatever they're going to do, a drop-off of sorts. Or it's someone who's in a car who can't get out. Maybe there's someone who's got kids or some other reason that they can't come into the store. And if it is a situation where someone needs to be discussed for a while, the pharmacist can open the window and talk to them in a private manner if it needs that. And if it really needs a privacy consultation, that's another reason why part of the Minute Clinic having a separate area, they can always be invited in if it's that unique that they need to have a very private conversation. It's not something like a Jack in the Box where they're blaring over a loudspeaker to the whole community saying, you know, "You need to rub the cream in this spot for two hours a day", you know. It's not like that.
Obviously, you know better than I do. I can't say it, but if it's working everywhere else, it's probably going to work. My, my final question is, do you consider it a critical part of the operation?
We consider it something, yes. And we consider it as, as a service to customers. And, and, and I'm sure some people get up today and say they don't like it, because we hear that every time. And then we typically get people like we did at our community meeting who say, "We do like it. We do like to have that ability for reasons of, of, of transportation or the fact that kids or other thing in the car and we can't come in." Yes, it is a critical part of the...
Thank you.
Commissioner Badami.
If it's that critical, do you have other CVS stores that operate without a drive-through window?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, can I elaborate though?
Yes.
Yes, we do. And, and, and in cases like here in Northern California where there are old Long's and Long's had a different model. Long's model was much more of a front-store oriented business. Front-store meaning everything in the pharmacy except the drugs, you know, the Pepsi and the chips and all that other stuff you buy. That's why they didn't have pharmacies. I'm sorry, that's why they didn't have drive-throughs. We, it is part of our business model to have drive-throughs. And now, do we go back to every single one and add one? You physically can't in a lot of cases. There's just no physical room unless you're going to cut down a building. And each one's separate, so I just want to be very clear on that. Do we always put a drive-through when we can? Yes, we do, always.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Nope? All right, thank you. All right, we're now going to open the public portion of this item and invite speakers, sorry, I already said that. Invite speakers to come. The first person I have is Anthony Silva. Oh, that's you, okay. So you'll just be coming and speak as we have questions then? All right. John Moore. Mr. Moore, you have three minutes. Make sure you pull that microphone close to you. When you start talking, we promise.
Good evening. John Moore, Moorebyuk GMC, 15500 Los Gatos Boulevard, right next to the property that's the topic. For the last six-plus years, I've been hoping and praying that we'll have a viable business next door. Not an empty car lot that's dark at night. Who knows what goes on inside that building most of the time? I've seen lots of people over there, who knows what they're doing. Having said that, my concern is the secondary building that they're proposing and its location. Hopefully you can see the story poles. This is a picture taken from my front door at the dealership. And you can see how high the storyboard is. I think it's close to 29 feet. And that's exacerbated by the fact that their property elevation is about three feet higher than ours. So that relative to my property, it's going to be significantly higher than 30 feet in the air. Here's a, here's another photo. That's walking about halfway onto the used car lot. And it just gets more massive and more massive. I was hoping a business would go in there that would be somewhat synergistic for my business, that we'd have some traffic and visibility. But the proposed secondary building here does anything but help me. As a matter of fact, I think it hurts from both a visibility standpoint and an access standpoint. I know early on the designs were more of a set-back secondary building in having it be a reverse L shape along the rear of the property. And that's something that I would really like to see. Or at a minimum, the height of the secondary building come down.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner King.
So it's a two-story and you'd like it to be a one-story?
At a maximum, yes.
A maximum one-story?
Maximum one-story.
Anything lower than that would be good. Thank you.
I have, I have a question. So if I understand you correctly, for the secondary building, what you preferred was when the building was not perpendicular to your lot?
Well, it was, it was set back much further from Los Gatos Boulevard, which afforded visibility to my lot from the traffic pulling in and out of the, the CVS. which afforded visibility to my lot from the traffic pulling in and out of the CVS, as well as a lot easier access for people to make their way onto my property.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Erickson?
So there was a trade-off on CVS's part to move the main building, the pharmacy building, further away from the corner, which probably precluded them from the original design of the retail building. I'm assuming that's correct. So do you have opinions about whether it's a good idea or a bad idea to move... Since you have vested interest in the Boulevard and the look of the Boulevard, is it better or worse to have the... Is it preferable to have moved the building back and the resulting consequence?
I do have a vested interest, you're right. I find this intolerable. I mean, I look at this, and I think, this is what Donald Trump has in mind for the border, you know, something that high and that tall. No, I can't accept this.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next is LeAnn Daly.
Hello, I'm LeAnn Daly, and I'm a resident on Cherry Blossom Lane, which is a one-block... I don't know my directions. Beyond Peach Hill Road and right one block away from the project that's being proposed. At the neighborhood meeting in July, I did raise the issue of concerns about traffic, particularly on Cherry Blossom Lane, which, of course, you know, goes from Blossom Hill Road all the way through to Los Gatos Almeden. And I was told at the meeting that there had been no studies done of the traffic on Cherry Blossom Lane. And I don't see that they addressed this issue at all in their... any of their revisions. I asked the planning department for a copy of the traffic study that was done. I received that by email at my office. And in looking through it as quickly as I could, I didn't see any study at all of the traffic on Cherry Blossom Lane. There is a proposed increase of about 2,000 more cars daily with this project. I anticipate that a great number of those cars are going to be coming down Cherry Blossom Lane. We already have a problem with excessive speed on Cherry Blossom Lane. Children walk that street twice a day to go to and from school, the Blossom Hill School. There's a crosswalk also at the end of Cherry Blossom Lane for the children to cross. That has not been addressed and how the traffic is going to impact that crosswalk. There has been serious accidents at that intersection, one just within the last two years where a car coming down Los Gatos Almeden Road actually plowed into the house on the corner of Cherry Blossom Lane and Los Gatos Almeden Road. Our block is in the city. I mean, I know there's some misconceptions that some of those houses are in the county. We are in the town. And I feel that our needs are just being totally ignored. And there are some significant traffic concerns that are going to develop from this project. At Peach Hill Road, now there's going to be five lanes. It looks from the new diagram, the two lanes from Los Gatos Boulevard under Los Gatos Almeden Road are going to... It's going to increase the number of lanes right there so that you're going to cut into the center section where there's a huge tree. I don't know whether there's been any analysis of what would happen to that tree. Those are my concerns.
Do you have any questions? Commissioner Talsworth and Commissioner Kane?
Thank you for coming down tonight. So I'm understanding that you have concerns with the additional traffic that this will cause with safety of pedestrians. And yet, we have a node here as it's identified by our Boulevard Plan. And what I've heard a lot from residents prior to this meeting, when we've looked at this project, is that they were hoping and anticipating a center or something where they could visit and where they could, you know, have go for, what, a neighborhood restaurant perhaps, another one or coffee. So that's what we've heard, and the Boulevard Plan calls for that activity, that both economically and just for our quality of life. So if you were going to put something there, what would you think should go there?
Well, I think it should be something other than a massive drugstore. I mean, I think there are other community centers that are gathering places. It could be multiple retail that is not going to involve such an increase in traffic. I commute twice a day at that intersection. It's horrendous. I concur with Mr. Kane. It's becoming impossible. We have a CVS in town. I don't think we need to have another massive drugstore. We have Rite Aid, we have Walgreens. I just think it's an overextension of use, and I don't think the traffic has been addressed. I don't think the safety issues. I would... I just think that that has not been adequately looked at.
And I believe if staff can correct me, but the CVS that's presently in town will be leaving, is that correct?
I would look to the applicant, but I would assume that would be the case.
We could clarify that.
I assume so.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Commissioner Kane, did you have a question?
I'm trying to find Cherry Blossom. Is Cherry the next right-hand turn after Peach Blossom?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
That's right.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Would it help if there were... to disallow left turn into Cherry Blossom from Blossom Hill? In other words, you're going to get traffic... You get traffic from two possibilities, right turns or left turns. I'm just wondering if you've thought at all about what the impact would be if left turns were prohibited into Cherry Blossom, and would that would help?
That would be helpful, although you're still going to have people coming, turning right, coming the other direction on Blossom Hill. I think one thing that would be helpful would be if there was no egress coming out of Cherry Blossom under Los Gatos Almeden, because I think a lot of the traffic...
Well, I was wondering...
Or that... I know off of Lark Avenue, for instance, you can't turn onto... is it High Island or whatever that street is, right by the car wash between commute hours? I mean, Cherry Blossom has become a freeway. I mean, and it's... There are children on that street all the time. Something has to be done about... And it's just going to make the matter worse.
Well, just simply dealing with the...
I understand.
...impact of this store.
Right.
People who go to the store would go past your street, or they wouldn't get to the store. So that's a right turn. So one would think that if traffic wants to go to that store, they're going to go past your street.
Right.
I was more concerned about the people that maybe came out of that store and would use your street as a... for a left turn as a shortcut. That might be more easily addressed. I don't know.
Well, people coming out of the store will... would be coming down Los Gatos Almeden towards Union Avenue, and they would turn right onto our street. So we have that traffic. And then people coming off of Blossom Hill are going to turn left to come to the store. So, you know, it's... I don't know what the planning design can be, but it's something I think just has to be done.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kane?
So what you have is cut-through traffic?
Right.
That's coming from Blossom Hill, avoiding the corners, avoiding LGB, and cutting through to get to Almeden?
Right.
I'm not thinking or seeing or feeling that that's going to be drugstore traffic. But in any event, you can find out from staff about traffic calming projects, different ways they could look at reducing that traffic, which may include prohibiting certain kind of turns. But they can also put in bumps and different things. And they did it on my street, which was a cut-through. And they can be very helpful in that regard. It's called traffic calming.
I know they put a traffic circle at Camellia Terrace and Cherry Blossom, and it's done no good. People blasted that signal.
I avoid that circle myself. I can't figure it out.
All right, do we have any other questions? No? Thank you. Vicki Kramer?
Hi, I'm Vicki Kramer. I've been here before. And the concern I have was when I finally printed out the document, was the removal of the oak trees. It looks like one, two, three, four, five. All five of them are going to be removed. One of them, which is 80 years old, give or take, by the diameter. And all these oak trees back right up to our backyard fence. And so they help protect, you know, the sunlight, is it sunset and the future lights in the parking lot. But I'm a little concerned because I've been asking... One of the things that my landlord has been asking, too, is this... Could it possibly save these oak trees? Number seven looks like to be 12 years old. Number six looks like to be 80 years old. Then the other two over here look to be about 40 years old. I think earlier today, when we started the meeting, there was something about the houses built after 1941. Well, this oak tree itself is older than that. So I think we need to probably take a look at that and not cut this thing down. And is it possible? Can we ask the developer to do something to build around it as best we can? You know, someone said to me today, you know, why we can send men to the moon or whatever, but we can't save a beautiful old oak tree like this. And then I guess my other concern is, well, it's kind of happening down the other end of Carlton where the employees that work at Trader Joe's tend to park on Carlton Avenue. And I got a funny feeling the same thing's going to happen closer to me down by CVS. I guess that's... Running the business itself, the manager might ask the employees not to do that, but I don't know where else they're going to be parking. I don't know if they're allowed to park in their own lot. So I just want to make... highlight the issue of the removal of these four oak trees. The protected oak tree, I think, from the Los Gatos information says all trees... Maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but all trees which have a four-inch or greater diameter, when removal relates to any development review. And I think maybe these oak trees possibly fall into that. I don't know.
Any questions? Commissioner Talsworth?
Is there a way that she could... Or we could see where that oak tree is on the plans?
Could we put DR4?
That's 80... Thank you. Well, how about all four, then?
Well, DR4 shows the location of all of them. There you go.
Thank you.
Can you grab the... Can you do me a favor? Grab the microphone comes off. Just take it with you so we can hear you.
All right, number seven, the first one. You can barely see the little number. This is about 12 years old. This one is about 80 years old. And these two are going to be about probably 40 years old. And what's interesting is, is this one right here was rated fair to poor. These 40-year-olds were rated fair. And then the 80-year-old was rated fair to good.
Did you have any follow-up questions to that?
I don't. Thank you very much for showing us that.
I have a question. When you had come before us previously, there was obviously some concerns about the wall that was going to be built between your properties. And there was discussion about, rather than that, just being a flat, unattractive wall, about making it more appealing on your side of the fence.
Right, right.
When you had your meetings with them, did you feel that those concerns that you had were addressed?
Yeah, I mean, I think... And I think I've seen it in the writing, too, that in all the paperwork, that they said it's going to be more decorative rather than a flat, hopefully not cinder block kind of looking thing.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that your concerns had been addressed.
And what's unfortunate, though, is that the drawing, you can see that the trees are kind of like right where that wall is supposed to be.
Yes.
So that's why I'm kind of asking, is there some way to, yes, provide that wall, but at the same time, let's try and save the trees? Let's think a little bit how we can do that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, the next person I have is Joseph Jimignani. All right.
I guess it's my third time here on this project. I was always kind of against it, basically on the architectural...
Actually, can you do me a favor? Can you speak into the microphone and state your name before you start for the record?
I'm sorry, Joseph Jimignani, National Avenue. I was... You surprised me here. This is my third time on this project. The first two times, I was kind of very against it because I didn't care for the style, architectural, you know, style elevation. And then I went to the community meeting, and I go, wow, they really did a lot of work on it, and I was very impressed with it. And it kind of had the feel like a lot of, you know, like a lot of the buildings on the Boulevard that were kind of recently done, the one next to Trader Joe's. I mean, the colors. The John Lean Building by Good Sam Drive, and, you know, I can go on and on. Panera Bread, the Phil's Coffee, that type of thing. And the elevation drawings, you know, reflected that. But when I look at this one here, it's changed from the meeting. And then I... So I went and looked at the pamphlet outside, and it did change. It's now a darker roof. It almost looks brown, if you really look at the color. Kind of a brownish-purple. I don't know why they changed it, but I just was more impressed at the meeting. But all in all, I would give it a go, you know. If I had my wish, it'd be made out of clay tile instead of concrete. But if they're going to go concrete, if you look at the old town, that actually is concrete tile. It looks pretty good, almost looks like clay. And that John Lean Building on... Is that Saratoga-Sunnyvale Road? Highway 9 and University? It's a two-story. That's also concrete tile that looks very good. But I don't know. I'm not... I still like the project, but I just wish it looked more like the colors we had at that meeting that we went to. It was a lighter color, and it reflected more of the Boulevard colors and more of the old town colors. And I don't know why you guys changed it. And if it has to do with the stone, you could always go with the lighter stone, like the prior meeting here, they have a lighter stone and lighter color tile. That's all I got to say. But I like the project in general. And I would be, you know, in support of it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No? Thank you. Julie Mersick?
Hi, I'm Julie Mersick. I live on Escobar.
Julie, could I ask you to pull the microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
I just want to start by saying, most of us may know that Walmart is the number-one corporation on the Fortune 500 list for 2015, and CVS is number 10. So I didn't know that, and I found that interesting. So I feel like the Commission has a unique opportunity right now to create the best CVS out there, at least in the Bay Area, with architectural uniqueness and detail. And I just would like to see the no-drive-through. I understand that the North 40, that you've already enacted, that there will be no drive-throughs in the North 40. And I would like to have the same thing in the neighborhood that I pass through every day. So I think that it's... From what I can tell, people get their prescription. Maybe the doctor emails it in, and then they run over there and think it's ready through the drive-through, and it's not ready. And there's waiting time and idling time and this sort of thing. So I don't think it's going to be quite as clean as possible. I also think the traffic is a huge problem on Los Gatos Almeden. The double-turn lane is a big problem. I pass through that every single day. That's my commute pattern. And you may or may not know that right now, when you're heading south on Los Gatos Boulevard, coming from the Lark exit, that that left turn cycles twice. So you turn left, then your light turns red. Somebody else goes, their light turns red. Guess what? The left-turn lane gets to go again because it's so busy already that it's not like you wait for everybody else to go, and then it's your turn again. They're constantly having to push those left turn through there. So I would just like to see... I know the Council or Commission has been working on being more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, fitness-friendly, family-friendly. And I just would like you to keep that in mind. CVS will come to us. We're in excellent market, constantly getting better. They're not going to go away. We're going to see a nice project there. But the other thing is on the parking. I don't think a parking exception is in order. They expect to have as much as 150... don't think a parking exception is in order. They expect to have as much as 150-seat restaurant there. And this parking problem with Whole Foods and the dentist on Farley at Los Gatos Boulevard pushing their employees to park out on the neighborhood streets, I don't think that's what we want to see here. And I would agree with John Moore that, you know, I'd like to see that side of the project pushed back for the retail building. Right now, it looks like it's probably going to be maybe a restaurant in front and then medical in the back or something like that. It's not really a retail.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Kane?
What is your specific objection to the drive-through?
Well, I grew up in LA. And I have lived in Los Gatos.
Say anything else, I'm going to go with that.
Yeah. It's not Los Gatos. That's, I, you know, picked this town. I'm fortunate enough to live here. And it's not, it's not our town, you know? McDonald's does not have a drive-through. Now, when my kids were little, I would have loved to have a drive-through at McDonald's. But thank God, they didn't, you know? And somebody stood up for that at one time. You know, it didn't just happen, right?
What is your objection to a drive-through?
Traffic, idling, noise. You know, if people need a drive-through, they can go to the Camden and Cooser site where there's also a drive-through McDonald's. You know, I, I don't think drive, this, Los Gatos is not a drive-through town. That's not our culture.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we now give the applicant an additional five minutes to respond to anything that you just heard. We'll probably have additional questions too, so.
I would like to touch base on the, the traffic. I just wanted to speak about what CVS is actually doing to mitigate the traffic. We're installing a bus bay along Los Gatos Boulevard. We are installing an additional turn lane. We are doing signal modifications. And we're also paying into the regional traffic fund. So it's not like we're just creating a bunch of traffic with no, no solution. We've, we've brought a solution and we've worked with staff to, to resolve it the best we can. As far as the drive-through goes, the drive-through is, is a, is not like a McDonald's. It's a totally different, different type of use. So to compare it to a McDonald's, that's not, that's not really fair. And then I did want to talk about the CVS. It's not going to be two CVSs. It is a relocation of the existing store. So this CVS purchased this property and they're going to move their store to this property. And then as far as the traffic on Cherry Blossom Lane, it was not our intention to, to not address an issue with the neighbors. We, we just felt that Cherry Blossom Lane was outside of our scope of work. And, and the problem there was more of a, a, a problem that needed to be addressed through the city with traffic calming devices or something along those lines. And that is exactly what, what we explained in, in the neighborhood meeting. Thank you.
Further questions? Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Kane?
You didn't mention the trees. One of the things that came up were the trees.
Oh, yes. So to get back to the trees, we are installing an eight-foot wall there. There will be a large footing for that wall. So we're going to impact, we're going to impact those root systems to put the wall up. We would love to try to work around the trees. In addition to that, we're putting our, our drainage, we have to have a place on the site for our drainage. You could see that, this drawing's not up there anymore, but you could. So, right along here where the trees are, this entire area is where our, where our onsite drainage retention will happen. So with the foundation for the wall and this area needing to be depressed, unfortunately, we are going to impact the trees. And, you know, we are, we're, we are up for discussing ways not to. We're trying to minimize that. Maybe we, we can find a way to, to save some of them. But, you know, a couple of them are in the parking area where there's already concern that there's not enough parking. So, you know, I don't know what more we can do with the building pushed off. There's only so much area with the, us meeting the setbacks, there's only so many places we can put drainage.
Which one is the 80-year-old tree?
Six, 80-year-old tree.
So I would just encourage you to give some thought to an 80-year-old saving, at least.
Sure, sure. And if we can, if we can not impact the root system and still get the wall in, and we can definitely try to rework our drainage to save that tree.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kane?
What, if anything, can you do about the Great Wall of Trump?
Well.
Does it have to be two stories?
Well, I would, I would defer that to my architect because there are certain requirements for screening, you know, rooftop equipment. And there's things that go into why the building's that high. So I'm going to, I'm going to let him answer that if you don't mind.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tony Silva, Architectural Dimensions. I'm the project architect on this. To answer your question, the, the building is a single story. Let's do some really quick math just to explain why the heights are what they are. Retail use, generally, a low ceiling in a retail use is about 10 feet. It's a little bit taller than what we have here. What retailers really want is 12 feet. Keeps the place from feeling congested. The lights are higher, it's brighter, and people want to come in and out. They don't want to go into a cave to shop. You don't want to go into a cave to work. So you start with 12 feet. Then you've got two and a half feet or so for mechanical, electrical, fire sprinklers above the ceiling. So you've got a two and a half foot canopy. So that's 14 and a half feet. Then you've got roof structure, something actually holding up the roof. Between columns, generally as a rule of thumb, we go 24 inches for that. So now you've got 16 and a half feet. Then you've got mechanical units on the roof that are keeping the place cool. Now, a lot of people think mechanical units are like the ones that are outside your house. You know, they're about this tall, about 30 inches or so. Mechanical units for a retail space, because you have so many people in them, some of them, once they're on top of their pedestals, which isolate the vibrations from them running, they can be five and a half feet tall. I mean, I've literally stood, bigger ones I've stood next to that are taller than me. These would probably be in that five, five and a half foot range. So I stopped at what, 16 feet at the roof level. Then you've got another five, maybe five and a half feet on top of that for mechanical. That gets you into the range of between 20 to 22 feet minimum for a building. Our buildings fall right in that for the minimum heights that we're using. Then we're popping up a little bit more for articulation, which is something that everybody wants to see on, on the building so that we don't have this boxy look where everything's straight across the board. You add things like towers, maybe pop the roof up a little bit in some areas, maybe at the entrances to make them more inviting so that people can see them from a distance, which is what we've done on these. So you get a little bit hi- higher ceiling. So, or excuse me, higher profile. And I, I think we're at about 24 feet from the existing grade at some of those areas. The other thing that we've got working against us is there's a three-foot grade difference between our property and the neighboring property. So the perceived height of the building is actually then three feet taller. And that's something we can't control. You know, the grade is what the grade is. We can't depress it because then you can't get water off the site. You just kind of have to work with it the way that it is. So at the end of the day, our building does look like it's 27 feet tall and is actually 24, 25. So that's kind of where we're at. That's why the building looks taller from the adjacent property. As far as moving the building back, I don't think that's really what your design standards for Los Gatos Boulevard really want. Seems like everything wants to be on the street. Obviously, we moved CVS building back because nobody wanted it there. But the smaller one, especially with this proposed or potential restaurant use along Los Gatos Boulevard, we've got a nice little deck there so that people could actually be on the street having dinner, enlivens the street a little bit more. That's where the building came, that's how the building came to where it is. And that's why the building is as tall as it is.
You said people having dinner. Have you secured a client?
No. No, but it's assuming it's a restaurant. Yeah, we're assuming it's a restaurant. That's kind of what we're tailoring it to. It may not end up being one, but that's kind of the use that I think would actually fall kind of into what we're looking for on the story, the town is looking for on that. And there's plenty of restaurants, Panera Bread, and it was there earlier today. It's right on the street.
Thank you. Do we have that picture of the looking south from the auto dealership? I want to share the picture with you. That's pretty impressive. I mean, that cuts off the sky, cuts off the hills. And you're telling me there's nothing to be done about it. I guess it's my fault. I didn't, I didn't walk onto that property to see it from that point of view. I looked at it, you know, from the south looking north.
To the point, the, if you were to take our foundation as the finished grade, let's forget the height difference and grade differences between the two properties right now. So if it was just on a flat piece of land, right now, our building is 21 feet, 6 inches maximum at the rear, at the rear facade facing the GMC dealership. It actually drops down to about 20 feet, 6 inches in one small portion. But from the existing grade, the part we really can't control, it's actually 23 feet, 6 inches. So if you look at it from just the flat plane, the building for retail use is actually very reasonable.
What is?
The, the actual height that we're using. We're not, we're not, we're not.
It may be reasonable in relative terms, but look at the picture.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
The question of the location of the, the building being considerably more towards the street. We went through this before with the, the main building, and that indeed had been the town's plan. And the neighbors, I happen to agree with the neighbors, thought we should move it back. And you did. We appreciate that. How difficult would it be, and I don't know what the staff thinks of this, but question anyway, how difficult would it be to move that 12,000 square foot building back a bit more? Because it's pretty far forward. And I can understand how the property adjacent to it, to the north, is concerned about the visibility from the street. So I guess the question is, how difficult would it be to set it back some more?
As far as a grading standpoint, I'd have to defer to my civil engineer who's here. But just from, let's talk conceptual, moving the building, I don't think would cause too many problems. But you're going to displace then the parking, which is screened by the building, and that's got to go somewhere. That's going to end up moving it to the street, which is something that I know you're allowing us to do with the CVS building because you want it back further. The question just becomes, is that something you're willing to allow us to do for the secondary building as well?
Well, it has, I don't know yet either. We haven't talked about it up here. But it has two benefits, I guess. It helps the more property insofar as the height of the building is at least moved backwards. And two, it allows the visibility of the, of the more property clearly by it moving backwards. So it has, it has two benefits. Now, whether that's something that should be done, I don't know. But I was just asking you as to any thoughts you would have on that, other than the visibility of the parking.
No, like I said, it, it, it's kind of a trade-off as far as there's only so much land on the site. We'd have to move one thing to get another. That's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? So one of the things that I noticed in looking at this, if we're going to talk about the second building and then I'll move into the CVS building, is you've maintained the same roof height throughout the whole second building. If we're talking about mechanical equipment, you're probably going to have one unit that's going to be for the restaurant, one unit for maybe the adjacent space. If we really plan out, how many units do you think you may be having on that roof?
It depends. For a building this size, you're actually going to see, for the restaurant, there's actually a lot of heat generated, especially because of the kitchen. And there's also a lot of people sitting close together. So you're actually going to have more like three or four units. Now, they may not be the five-foot ones that I'm talking about, but they would still have, they'd still be sizable because you have so many people together. And then for the, for the retail spaces, depending on what, how big they are and how we end up dividing the space, you may have two minimum per space. Again, it, sometimes you put one bigger one, or you can put two smaller ones, but they're all, you know, you have, basically, it's, it's rated on tonnage. So you could have multiple to a space. That's not uncommon.
Right. So then, I mean, and obviously it's hypothetical, you haven't laid this out. What I was trying to determine is rather than look at having that roof line spread equally along the entire top at that height, if there was a way to articulate the roof line, or maybe you combined the footprint of where you're going to be placing your mechanical units and your pads to a smaller floor, well, not floor print, but space, to where that would be the one elevated portion of the roof line, and then there could be a step down of the roof line towards the rear, that would allow, where that massing is not so much where the hillside views is. Because I, I actually walk up and down the street all the time. And that was one of the big things that caught my eye as I was heading from where I live, right along this viewpoint, was that you did hit a point where you are truly, there was no view left, just because the way that, you do have a site that's elevated. I walked it. Yeah, so I was trying to, when I was standing there looking at it, trying to figure out a couple of things. One, if there was a way that we could do that, combine your mechanical units to one point, be able to articulate the roof. And if the plane that is at Los Gatos Boulevard, if there was a way to articulate that better so it wasn't one large massing right up the street. We know that in, we, we do like things closer to the boulevard, just not perhaps that close. And story polls don't always tell the whole story. I understand that. But even in looking at your drawings, it felt like you had a large vertical plane. So I wondered if you could address those two items on that building.
Okay. So, okay, so we have variegated the roof here. Now, to your point about kind of combining the mechanical units. So if the restaurant portion is here, and this is on the street, to put mechanical units, say, in this back area, doesn't...
I want it more towards the front. I want you to lower that back because that back point back in here, yeah, I want to see that part lowered because of the views basically from your neighbors and anybody driving down the boulevard.
Well, yeah, I mean, the boulevard's here.
Right. No, I'm saying if you're...
Right. So you want to see, you want to see the views out in this way.
Yeah. So if you're standing in Mr., not even in Mr. Moore's lot, if you're walking that way on the road, and you were to look to your left, the way that massing is in the back portion of your building, it completely wipes out views. So my thought had been, if there was a way, obviously the restaurant's going to take the highest heat load, to move those mechanical units to the front, potentially the office, move those more towards the front, you could drop that roof line down potentially five and a half feet.
Close, yes. We would still need parapets and things, but
Understood.
You're, you're on the right track. We could, we could cut a smaller, or a portion of the roof, maybe in this area. The problem is, is that this, this area is still going to need mechanical cooling. But we can also, we could move the units to the front of the building.
You're giving your mechanical guy two feet below your beams, your support beams.
I'm, I'm sorry. That's actually sometimes not enough.
No, I know. But they, but they could probably pull some rectangular or flex ducts over there and make it work. So I'm, I'm just thinking, there's, there's definitely a way to make that work, to bring that down, which I think may be a good compromise with your neighbor.
There are, yes, that's something we could explore, and that's something we'd be willing to explore. The problem being though, and I hate to bring this up, but I'm going to put myself in the, in our neighbor's shoes, is that I'm thinking that he wants visibility from the street as you're coming south on Los Gatos Salma. And so maybe we can ask him, but I think he's actually more objecting to the height here than the height here.
And I, I do realize that, but that my comment on this was a little bit following up with Commissioner O'Donnell's comment. We're asking, the oak tree is a big deal. There's got to be ways that you... There's got to be ways that you could drive piers down to support the fence instead of doing a large footing. If you move that back and you have to displace parking, I don't see how you could save the tree. So I'm trying to massage this building a little bit to see what we could do that may minimize this impact, but also keep parking in the tree.
I think if we think outside the box, it's something that we could address in order to try and get that down and try and find at the very least a middle ground where we both get, one, what we need just mechanically, just because of what we need, but two, also to help preserve the views. I think there might be ways that we can do that.
Okay. And in that same vein, on this side, that winds up because of the way the roofing is flat on this portion, it does wind up being a large mass. Would you be able to provide a pitch roof on this side?
Sure.
That would soften this architectural? Okay.
Yeah, we could do a mansard roof, which is similar to what we're doing on the front of the building and on the CVS building.
Right, okay. I probably have a couple more questions, but I'll let my other commissioners ask. No one has any other questions? All right, okay. Commissioner, tell us for...
Could I ask how you arrived at the site planning? I mean, the arrangement of the buildings. What was the driver there?
It's been a long haul. The arrangement is the CVS building, obviously. We work for CVS. They own the property. We, it's the size that it is. You know, we're asking for 14.5, and so you have a 14.5 box, that's not including mezzanine, that we need to locate with parking, with landscape, with views, orientation to have the front entrance to the corner. And then you essentially have the space that is left over. And it's not a, it's not a real fancy answer, but that's basically how we came to where the building is located.
So my understanding is the CVS building had to be the prominent building?
Well, it's always been, yes.
Yes. So that's where I'm having an issue, is understanding the integration of the supposedly shopping or retail area as it, how, I don't see it mixing very well. To me, it looks like two places. We've got the big CVS building with the entry that faces the corner of the boulevard. And then you have to go all the way to the back to hopefully a restaurant that we're assuming is going to be there. Otherwise, as I noticed in the staff report, it could be all office as well, correct?
You know, I honestly don't know what it's going to be.
You don't know what it's going to be? Okay, so that being said, I'm having an issue with just how I see people walking around and using, with what I was hoping was going to happen with that node, is that it would entice people to come in and, especially from the neighborhood. Because what I've learned over the years is that those neighbors want a place that they can go and buy whatever and something that's enticing, something that's unique for them to be there. I don't see that with this, the way it's designed. And the other thing I don't see, quite frankly, in your architecture is 360 design, which is extremely important here in Los Gatos. And I will name the buildings right now that have that 360 design that are commercial buildings. And they are the building that is at the corner of Highway 9 and University, the building that is now the Palo Alto Medical Foundation building. That is 360, even though there's big trees there. And there's lots of detail there that says to me, this is Los Gatos. Even the building, there's two buildings actually across the street from this property. Those buildings I will also, you know, mention. So I'm just having a really hard time. I'm looking at the architecture here, and I'm really seeing CVS that I see basically in all of the Bay Area. And I felt like that. And then when I reread Larry Cannon, our town architect's consultant evaluation, he said about the same thing. I don't see that your design here has changed much from what you first presented to us. Can you comment on any of that?
Well, I can, yes, I can. Bring up the elevations of the CVS. Also have the site plan. Start with the site plan.
Okay, where are you? What is that page?
This is DR 6 in your packet. Okay, so as far as addressing pedestrians, we've provided pedestrian links to the buildings with the crossroads here at the entrance of CVS. So we've got an entry plaza here at the node between Los Gatos Almedin and Los Gatos. That would be a seating area with benches, tree cover, landscaping, some low boullard lights for evening times with the cover of the trees around the perimeter. That entry plaza then is linked to the rest of the property, rest of the project, through a pedestrian passeo here, which passes again by the CVS entrance, goes through a covered arcade and into the secondary retail space. Coming from Peach Blossom and Cherry Blossom and the residential neighborhoods down in here, we've got another passeo which comes up into the building, again, under another arcade and to the front of CVS, which then would lead over to the secondary retail building. As far as, are there any other questions on the site plan before I put the elevations up? Just to address your questions about the elevations.
Well, I guess in relationship to the site plan is that, and maybe this has to do, deal with the 360 architecture, is that, well, we'll wait till you get to the elevations. I'm also having an issue with understanding, the cars come in and then they can only come in, how do they get, how do cars come in who come in off of Blossom Hill? And they decide to go to the pharmacy drive-through. How does that work? Do they have to go?
You mean Los Gatos Almedin or, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with... Is Blossom Hills out here? Okay, so...
No, that's Los Gatos Boulevard. That's what I mean. That's what I meant. Did I say something else?
You said Blossom Hill.
I'm sorry.
So Los Gatos Almedin or Los Gatos Boulevard?
Los Gatos Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. So you would, if you're heading, if you're heading southbound, you would come into the turn lane, come down Los Gatos Almedin, and come in to the curb cut here away from the intersection. If you're going north, you're coming in and you'll go right into this turn racquet here. If you're coming this way, you're going to have to come through this way and come into the drive-through. If you're coming southbound and you come off of Los Gatos Almedin, it's more of a straight shot. And there should be a, I think there's a circulation diagram in your packet that shows the cars circulating through.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Commissioner Erickson? Don't wave it. He was going to talk, he was going to put the elevations up.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so 360 architecture. So when I was here in December, we talked about, we talked about areas of the building. There's always service areas. One of the problems when we had the building up on the corner was the front door needed to be for where the cars were coming in. We also had a front door that was on the pedestrian side, but there has to be an area where you're going to have storage, where you're going to have trash, where you're going to have back-of-house items, bathrooms, offices, things like that. So on the CVS building, we tried to put all those uses away from the street frontage because those uses really limit what you can do architecturally. You're not going to have a window in a bathroom. It's really not a good idea to have a window into a storage area because somebody can just throw a brick through it and steal everything you've got. You really don't want a window into a receiving area where they're bringing in boxes and things like that. So on the front areas, I'll start there. We have, you know, the floor-to-ceiling windows. Now, these windows won't be blocked by merchandise or anything like that. There is actually going to be a walking aisle of about four, four and a half feet between the window glass and the closest merchandising fixture. That's something that we typically do when we have windows of this size in our buildings. So you're not, there's not going to be any graphics. There's not going to be any merchandise in these windows. It's just going to be, you're going to be able to see into the store. Here's our entry tower feature here. This is the, these are the arcades that I was talking about. There's one here and there's one here. Those arcades serve two purposes. They allow some interaction as people approach the store, but they also help break down the boxy nature of the store. It was something that came up during our last meeting, also came up during our neighborhood meetings. Didn't want such a stark wall going on. We talked about, you know, moving the roof back structurally, especially in some of these seismic zones that can be problematic. We did add the mansard roofs to help soften that vertical wall, but then we also added the arcade to give the appearance of a stepped-back feel. And also, like I said, add some interaction between the pedestrian user and the building itself. And some awnings here to add some articulation and a little bit of human scale. The backside, though, this is what we were going to get at. So on the elevation between the, between the secondary building and the CVS building, so this would be visible from the Los Gatos frontage. We do still, again, we have windows looking into the store where there actually is retail at that part of the building. Then as we move back into these areas here, this is more of the service area. We've got our pharmacy here, which has to be secure for obvious reasons. We've got places where we need to locate trash. One of the comments that came up last time was we had our trash enclosures backed up across the drainage swale from the residential neighborhoods. We got your message loud and clear. We don't want them adjacent to the neighborhood parks. So what we did was we incorporated that into the building architecture and tried to make it a feature by giving it a roof. Again, this sticks out from the building. There's actually a walkway on this one between the wall of the trash enclosure and the building itself of about five feet. So there's actually a sidewalk that comes through here because I think there's some parking here. And then we also incorporated it into what's considered the real backside of the building. This is the portion facing the residential property line. So we tried to incorporate not just a blank facade at these service areas. We tried to incorporate articulation. Again, we didn't do just a straight parapet in these service areas. We did, we continued the mansard roofs even though most people won't ever see them. But we did follow through with that whole kind of design concept and try and dress up and make these service areas, which are typically really ugly. I just drove behind the Nob Hill Center today because we were just kind of looking around there and we cut through the back area where they make deliveries. That's not a very good-looking portion of the building at all. Here, we essentially have the same thing, and it's 100% better, in my opinion. We screened the delivery truck area, which is going to be right here, with an eight-foot wall made out of the same materials as the building, added rock, veneer, same veneer we're using on the building. We added it to a portion of this screen wall. Again, it's a utilitarian area, but we're still trying to carry these details through to these utilitarian areas. We took this portion here at the corner, which really has no windows or anything, and tried to at least give it some relief, give it a tower element. This is where the pedestrians coming from the neighborhoods are going to come towards our store. Gave it a tower element, gave it an arcade, again, to try and bring these details out in some, excuse me, in some of the areas which are considered to be ugly areas that are needed for just facilitation of having a business. So that was what we did to try and incorporate 360 architecture into this building.
Thank you for that. I will say that I appreciate the entry, where you put the entry into this space with the water features and the benches and things. However, to my point about this being pedestrian-friendly and being something that I want, you know, I would love the neighbors to come here. When I'm across the street right presently at the secondary retail and I look across, I'm going to be seeing the backside of a building. That is how it translates. Because, okay, I see the windows, but I also see trash enclosures and they're, that's metal. That's corrugated metal, I believe. That's not real attractive. And then I'm going to be seeing a lot of cars because that's the drive-up window, correct?
Yes, the drive-up window is right here.
Yeah, so I'm just having a hard time thinking that that is anything like pedestrian-friendly. And still above all of those features, that's a pretty tall wall.
Up in here?
No, yeah, on the two ends, yes.
Oh, here?
On the two ends. So I'm struggling with this. I'm really struggling with it. And that's all I'll say for now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Erickson.
So the, what I would guess are the intended use in the retail building, which is to have a restaurant with 108 feet.
Potentially, yes.
My guess is they wouldn't have gone to, but anyway, I'm going to, I'm going to make some, I made some assumptions, okay? That in fact, the, because I'm going to ask you a question at the end, but you have to understand how I get to where my question is. So I made an assumption that at the site, the CVS building needs to be whatever size it is right now. That's its size. It needs to be to accomplish the goals of operating the CVS pharmacy in Los Gatos as they conceive it to be. The size of the secondary retail building really has nothing to do with the operation of the CVS. I assume it's a financial issue for CVS, big CVS, and that's reasonable, legitimate because they bought a piece of property which they own and they're developing, and that's a financial thing with them. There's nothing but, so that's fine. They are best served by maximizing the amount of square footage that they put into that building from a financial standpoint. But if they do that, and they do, and they proceed with which I believe they, I would conjecture that they would do because everything would lead me to that conclusion. They're asking for a parking exception, which they wouldn't need if they didn't intend to have a 108-seat restaurant. So here's what I did. I left the square footage of the CVS building the same. I assumed that 3,600 square feet would be required for a 108-seat building. I then calculated how many, by the town standards, how many parking spots were required, and then figured out what size remaining square footage could be built on the space in addition to the 3,600 square feet approximately that would allow...
for the most part, exactly where it is.
Which...
You're breaching my mind. Can I, is your question going to take very long because I, I need to make a motion to continue?
Which then would, I believe, would allow you to better accommodate preserving the trees that are on the back of the property potentially?
The tree issue, because we have that swale there, I, I'll have to talk with my civil engineer because we are doing grading and the trees don't like grading and stuff like that and we do have to put the water somewhere, that's a state mandate. But I think that's a separate issue from where the building's located. They might be, they might be kind of tangential to each other, maybe one slightly affects the other, but I really see them as two separate issues.
All right, my fellow commissioners, it's almost 11:30 and I would like to figure out from all of you if we would like to stay quite a bit later or continue this discussion to the next meeting, continue the other items to a date certain. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Could we, as far as I'm concerned, my, I don't have any more questions. So the sooner we would deliberate, the more likely it is we could get it done in a reasonable amount of time. To the extent that we have a number of other questions to ask, then it will take more time because then we have to discuss by ourselves. So perhaps if the chair might inquire as to that, because very frankly, I'm still on Paris time, so it's getting on nine o'clock in the morning. So I will fall asleep in a few minutes.
Yeah, understood.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Erickson?
I don't have any more questions of applicants, but I have some significant questions for the staff.
Right. And Commissioner Towesfor?
Oh, I probably have more questions for the applicant, but I can save them. I mean, I don't need to.
Okay. Commissioner Padome?
I'd rather continue this.
Yeah, I, I have quite a few more questions and questions of the staff too. So I think in light of the hour, we should probably talk about what our next move is. Do we do a special meeting to bring CVS back? What is your suggestion? And then we need to look at when we bring the other item back.
So the next meeting, we have one continued item, which is the Blackberry Hill, which will be coming back and then we'll be taking comments on an EIR. Those are the only two items, so there's probably some room to continue all three of these to that meeting.
And that is the September 9th?
September 9th.
Okay. So that would be having you guys come back on September 9th to continue.
One request, and that's fine. Could we possibly on the next one be first on the agenda and can we stay first on the agenda? I have some people who have flown up here. I have other people who have a long drive and just, I, I know we're all busy people, but I don't think that's too much to ask.
No, it isn't. So yeah, you're right.
You can't make that promise.
Oh, I don't, can't make the promise, but we'll hear the request, okay? I don't make the agenda, staff does, but...
Thank you.
How about I say that whatever they put on paper, I won't change?
That's good.
Is that a fair promise?
And then I'll, and then I'll eat accordingly.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Erickson?
So my good friend, Commissioner O'Donnell's challenge with the time of day, I'd be willing to stay another hour.
I have been in meetings since 7:00 AM.
Deal with this particular issue.
I, I'm afraid I can't mentally give them what this project needs, to be very, very honest.
Okay.
So I need to make a motion to continue this to September 9th. Okay, I'm going to make the motion to continue this to September 9th. And the two other items on the agenda, Commissioner Towesfor?
I'll second it. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to second. All, do you have a statement, Commissioner Erickson?
So I'd offer, I'd suggest to the chair to offer a friendly, a friendly amendment. I wouldn't lock in the other two items to the September 9th meeting for the staff. I would just continue them to a date to be determined.
Yeah, that's fine.
We want the date certain so that we don't have to renotice it. That's, that's the issue with that. So you want the date certain and if, if we can't get to it on that item, then it'll be continued to another date.
Yeah, we can set a date certain and then they can talk to the applicant and change it, so. All right, so that's my motion. Commissioner Towesfor, you seconded?
I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that an aye? A begrudgingly aye, passes unanimously. Okay. All right. Ms. Prevetti, do we have a report from the Director of Community Development?
We have no report tonight.
Great. Does anyone have any other commission matters?
That's reversed for next meeting.
That's next meeting's EIR. It's for next meeting, it's the EIR. All right. Meeting closed.